...was infected with the Christmas holiday spirit. Hopefully it'll continue. Let's go to order this meeting, the Champaign County Board for the Hole for Finance Policy and Justice. Today is Tuesday, December 15th, 2011. Time is 6:04. Please turn off your cell phones or put them on silent or live. Um, roll call, please.
Burke, Son, Beth.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Coer.
Robson.
Esri.
Here.
Holderfield.
Here.
James.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Kurtz.
Here.
Langenhain. Maxwell.
Here.
McGinty.
Here.
Michaels.
Here.
Moser. Udo.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
Petrie.
Here.
Wissenberry.
Here.
Richards. Rosales.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Alex.
Here.
Adams.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Benzel.
Here.
Wyble.
Here, we have a forum. Uh, this person was invited to attend tonight at the time of emergency. Uh, Mr. Langenhain, this person crossed the ocean and Mr. Moser has thrown you off the manatees. Uh, so approval in that for the letter A, 2011 meeting.
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. James, seconded by Mr. Beth. We have to take a chance on Joe, too.
Yeah. At least he's not swimming in with his sharks here.
Uh, discussion on the minutes. Steve, not all favor?
Aye.
No opposed. Motion carries. Public participation, um, the, oh, sorry. Uh, suit proven the agenda and the addendum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rosales. Ms. Adams says she'd like to move item E1, if you have it, E9. E1 from the agenda on page four, near the bottom of the chair report. It moves out from the agenda. Any other changes? All favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. If you wish to speak to public participation, please fill out a form and give to the, like, that misstep. Okay, um, first up is Jill Capes.
Hi there. Thanks for, um, uh, listening to me this evening. My name's Jill Capes. I'm a representative of the Champaign-Urbana Immigration Forum. Um, I'm here tonight just to let you guys know that, um, we put out a report, uh, focusing on the federal Secure Communities Program in Champaign-Urbana. In case you aren't familiar with this program, um, it is designed to, um, its intention was to identify and deport, uh, criminal aliens, um, as, as ICE would say, Immigrations and Customs Enforcement. However, that's not what's happening in Champaign County. Here, we have approximately seventy percent of those who are detained under this program are non-criminals, no criminal background. This program isn't working here, and we want to invite all of you to, uh, read our report on what is happening, how this came into play. Um, it was directly approved by Sheriff Walsh himself, no oversight from any of yourselves or any other public officials. Um, and we see that as quite problematic in addition to this failure rate that, um, of seventy percent. Um, we're also concerned that, um, this program is, uh, leading to racial, could be leading to racial profiling in our community. It's breaking up, uh, families, and it's leading to distrust of police in this county. Um, we've already had a public forum for this event. Uh, it was held December 1st at the public library. We had approximately a hundred and sixty concerned citizens there, um, who seem to share our concern. And, um, we have shared our report with the sheriff, also hope to share it with you. We've asked the sheriff already to suspend all holds related to, um, to this, especially for non-criminals. We are in agreement that criminals, um, should be held for ICE. Um, and we've also asked the sheriff to, um, ensure transparency of how this program is actually working. So giving the, yourselves and the rest of the community a report each month on what the costs are, what the detainments are looking like, et cetera. Um, and, uh, to establish a clear line of authority in the county jail and to improve the documentation of what's happening related to detainments, um, under the Secure Community Program and the flow of information in, in his office. Um, so, uh, this is my first time. I don't know if I'm supposed to ask the questions.
No, we do not allow questions during public participation.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Ricardo.
D X.
Yeah, D X.
Good evening. My name is Ricardo V S. I live on Main Street here in Urbana, and I'd like to also address you on this so-called Secure Communities Program. Um, Jill, if you don't mind, um, sharing the copies of the report. I don't know what protocol is. Probably.
You can leave the password.
Okay. Just to give you some background, um, August of 2010, an immigration official came to the area, invited several of the sheriffs of neighboring counties, explained a very frozen program, a lot how to make our community safer. Within two weeks, uh, internal discussion had happened and a very quick survey, the EMA say, uh, was filled out, and Champaign County was now under this federal program. Not only not, not only did we not know, as citizens, as officials, we found out some concerned people working in immigration, churches, advocates, researchers, uh, that have been meeting and is now called the C U of Urbana Immigration Forum. The group has come about because of our concern of serving and welcoming immigrants to our community, especially, uh, given the status of the university with a growing international student population. The report that, uh, some of you have, I apologize, we didn't have enough, but, um, it looks like they're being spread out. The report is a summary of over a year of Freedom of Information Act requests, uh, through the sheriff's office, who are in the process of requesting information from Urbana and from the Champaign police as to the procedures, their notifications, and their internal communications as to the program. We leave it in your hands with an invitation to learn more. We realize that it's, uh, a little bit, is an obfuscated program. The feds just brought it upon us. We signed up, and now we're suffering the consequences of it, uh, especially the costs. Uh, the report that you have in front of you is actually the Champaign County issue. There is a state report produced already in Chicago. We chose not to reproduce it, but if you'll go to the website on our report, you'll be able to get what the national and the state outlook, uh, details and the trouble that this program has had nationally, to the point that even now, the Obama, Obama administration is actually looking for ways to withdraw it. It was before Congress two weeks ago, uh, in the subcommittee, uh, that handles immigration matters in the judiciary. All I ask is that as the relationship of a group of concerned citizens to public officials develops, that we are informed enough to make clear decisions. We have directed our comments mostly to the sheriff's office, but really, it concerns all of us because when people are arrested, deported for as little as a traffic light or as little as looking like someone that isn't a citizen, it creates great tension in the community. It creates a distrust of police officers, and let me tell you, when somebody runs a stoplight and they're afraid of being deported because of that, it creates all kinds of silly and grievous decisions. We can't have that in our communities. We ask you to look at the report, call us, the C U of Immigration Forum at the website. Uh, we're willing to inform, give you the details, whether it's in caucus meetings, whether it's in groups of, I don't know, in this group, two or threes, we're willing to inform. Right now, we're on the group of about twenty-five people that is educated enough. We did that forum two weeks ago. But, uh, the response, the record for the community has been tremendous, and Mr. Kurt, I think you got a copy now. But anyone else who wants more details, we appreciate the opportunity to explain the program, the stories, and maybe introduce you to some of the victims. And I think you're in.
Derek Winstone's down.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Derek Winstonley. I'm Chief Emeritus of the Illinois State Water Survey and currently a consultant to the Mohammed Aquifer Consortium. Although whatever I say here tonight is a private, as a private citizen, not necessarily representing the views of those organizations. I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about the risks associated with the proposed construction of a chemical waste landfill in Clinton, uh, dispose of PCBs. Want to mention, uh, three topics, the toxicity of the PCBs, the Mohammed Aquifer itself, and talk about the risks of contamination. Uh, it's PCBs with a concentration greater than fifty parts per million that are proposed for storage in this, uh, new landfill. The existing solid waste landfill at Clinton currently accepts PCB products and PCB contaminated soil with a concentration of up to fifty parts per million. So the new landfill would take PCBs at much higher concentration. For reference, the current maximum contaminant level for PCBs in drinking water systems as stated by U S E P A is zero point five parts per billion, much less than the concentration of the material going into the landfill. What does that mean? For reference, we have seven billion people on this planet, so zero point five parts per billion would be three point five individuals compared with the whole population of seven billion, just for reference. So the point is that PCBs are highly toxic to humans in very small quantities. PCBs have been shown to produce cancer, damage reproductive nervous and endocrine systems, create skin, brain, and development problems. The U S Congress banned PCBs in nineteen seventy-nine. The permit approval for the Clinton landfill is under the jurisdiction of the Toxic Substances Control Act of nineteen seventy-six. The Mohammed Aquifer, over which the landfill sits directly, is the sole source of water for about six hundred and fifty thousand people in east central Illinois. The water is very high quality and is used for domestic, industrial, agricultural, recreation purposes, and in hospitals, schools, and other community and non, uh, private facilities. Briefly, just trying to explain the main characteristics of the aquifer. From the Illinois-Indiana border across to the Illinois River is an old bedrock river valley. So you take a valley, V shape. Over successive glaciations over the past couple of hundred thousand years, the glaciers of depositing material have filled the valley. So the bottom of the valley, the bottom hundred, hundred and fifty feet, is a layer of sand. That's the Mohammed Aquifer. It's the water contained in those sand pores that we depend upon for our water supplies. Above that, on the top of the aquifer, up to, near the surface, is a layer of placeable material that's primarily clay and silt, which is saturated but much less permeable. However, it is not impermeable. That would be important as I start talking about the risks. It's relatively impermeable, which means that water does get through it slowly. Recharge water that's gradually percolating through can carry contaminants, including PCBs, into the aquifer below. So moving on, what, what are the risks of contamination? Webster's Dictionary defines risk as the chance of injury, damage, or loss. A chance means a possibility or probability of occurrence. Zero risk means there is no chance of injury, damage, or loss. For any risk above zero, it's important to determine the likelihood or probability of injury, damage, or loss, and the nature of the risk. The Toxic Substances Control Act, under which the landfill will be managed, requires that a chemical waste landfill, such as the one in Clinton, has to provide, quote, "protection against, against risk." What does that mean? Protection against risk? It's not defined. The draft U S E P A approval document that the U S E P A is now considering finds that the Clinton landfill, quote, "will not present an unreasonable risk of injury to health or the environment." But not unreasonable risk is also not defined. The draft approval document also states that the Mohammed Aquifer is completely isolated from surface water and shallow groundwater. Disposal of PCBs at the proposed site would not impact natural resources of the Mohammed Aquifer or put any users at risk. So they're saying zero risk. And in the November fifteen, fifteen presentation to the Mohammed Aquifer Consortium, the Clinton landfill chemical waste unit stated that there was, quote, "no long-term risk to groundwater." They quoted Dr. David Daniel, former dean of the U I U C College of Engineering, stating in two thousand and six that the design of a hazardous waste-filled landfill liner system is designed to contain the wastewater, quote, "with reasonable assurance of safety." Doesn't say no risk, it's reasonable assurance of safety. After the presentation, I challenged the Clinton people about them saying that there was no, no risk, and they finally admitted that there obviously was some degree of risk. In east central Illinois, we want to ensure uncontaminated water supplies for all future generations. That's the nature of sustainable water supplies. It's not for the next five years, not for fifty years, forever. So what degree of risk are people willing to accept for construction of a chemical landfill directly over the Mohammed Aquifer? Is it zero risk? Is it no unreasonable risk? Is it reasonable assurance? Is it a one in one hundred chance of injury? Or a one in one thousand chance of injury? We know that there are risks of contaminating water supply and damaging the health of future generations. I'll give you a couple of examples.
Uh, Mr. Wood, I leave with one or five minutes. Help, we have five minute rule, however.
Sorry, I got to this.
No, no, sorry. Let me explain. Uh, during, when discussing, the deputy chair has the right to call you back, so we can call you back outside if you need to take a role in the discussions.
Okay.
All right? And you don't need to suspend the rule to do that.
Thank you.
Is there further, uh, public participation? Okay, um, any communications for the board? Mr. James?
I just wanted to make mention, uh, one of our Rantool natives, Paul Brown, passing away here in the tunnels last week, but he was also sheriff of this county. He had served Rantool, and he was, uh, all around, was a good, sentimental guy, especially when, uh, we'd be out on weekends.
Okay, let's move on to, um, finally.
Okay. A little extensive agenda this evening. First is an amendment, one one zero 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 five eight out of the coroner's office for three hundred and twelve dollars. A motion for approval by Brad. Is there a second by Carol? Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Next up, one one zero 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 six zero out of the law library for twenty-six sixteen. Time for photocopying costs. Is there a motion for approval by Al? Is there a second by Geraldo? Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Next up, one one zero 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 six one, amendment out of the auditor's office for five hundred and twelve dollars. A motion for approval by Brad. Is there a second by Carol? Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Next up, one one zero 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 six one, amendment out of the auditor's office for five hundred and five hundred for the reorganization of the EMA department. Is there a motion for approval? By Jan, seconded by Patsy. Discussion. Stan?
I sort of remember thinking back that when this was done, that the person that left that office and came over to the auditor's office, they were not a full-time employee. They would have gone full-time, that basically the hours would offset any other increased cost because the person we had in there had also moved to another department. And the understanding I had at that time, I realized she made more money, but due to the increase in the hours, it would offset, from what I recall, the money or any type of raise that was anticipated, because basically that position's not being filled by a higher-paid employee than what used to be. Am I correct?
I'm sorry. I don't recall that we ever talked about this employee reducing hours from full-time status. What you were told at the time that this, the auditor wrote this description, um, EMA was reorganized and administrative assistant position was eliminated. This individual was the incumbent in that position, and a deputy director position was created. And the difference in salary for those two positions was minimal. There was no required increase to the EMA budget. This individual is covered by the ASME contract and had the right to bump anyone within the general unit, but chose to move to this vacant position. She was allowed to retain her current salary because the contract requires that. The individual who had been budgeted to fill the position in the auditor's office was an employee who had had about five years with the county. This incumbent has over twenty years with the county, so there was disparity between their two salaries. And we didn't amend the auditor's budget at that time because oftentimes if there's any attrition or turnover or leaves of absence during fiscal year, those kind of additional, um, personnel costs can be absorbed within the budget. But in this case, there was no change to the staffing in the auditor's office throughout the year, so the amendment is necessary to accommodate the difference in the salary between the person who left the position and the person who filled it.
Other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item number five, amendment number sixty-four for twelve, four thirteen out of the EMA, uh, to pay out benefits for retiring employees. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
By Stan. Is there a second? By Carol. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item number five, amendment number sixty-four for twelve, four thirteen out of the EMA, uh, to pay out benefits for retiring employees. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
By Stan. Is there a second? By Carol. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item number six, a transfer, one one zero 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 one eight out of the law library for a hundred and twenty-one dollars by M R F. Is there approval for approval by Al? Seconded by Stephanie. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item number nine, a transfer out of, uh, this year, number twelve, zero 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 one for twenty-nine thousand seven hundred out of the public defender's office. This is a contract with a private attorney to cover caseload. This, um, a sorry, motion for approval by Brad. Seconded by Carol. Discussion. Tom?
Try to make sure I don't have any.
Diane, let it.
I do prefer. I will.
So Tom is noting conflict of interest, uh, and he is abstaining. Others, other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Note the bets of extension. Item number ten is an amendment, number twelve, zero 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 one, out of, um, the debt service, uh, account for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, uh, to correct a fiscal twenty-twelve budget data entry error. Is there a motion for approval? By Gary. Is there a second? By Pius. Discussion. Diane?
Sorry. Um, this is a large item to the bottom of our budget, and I think maybe on our desk tonight, we have a new, um, report from you for the General Corporate Fund. Wanted to know if that was included in it, and it seems like this two hundred and thirty, the fifteen, twenty-nine, we've got a lot of things last minute that have come up, and I mean, accidents happen, and that's okay, but this is a large amount, our bottom line this year.
Okay, clarification. This report is for the General Corporate Fund. This budget amendment is on the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund. They're separate funds. This report is for fiscal year twenty-eleven. This amendment is for fiscal year twenty-twelve.
So.
You're approving amendments and transfers for both fiscal years tonight because we're in the process of closing out fiscal year twenty-eleven, but we are, as of December first, in fiscal year twenty-twelve.
Okay, but we approved that budget, did you agree?
The budget was approved in November. These bond payments, the bond principal payments are due January first. If you look on page twenty-three of your agenda package, this is an error. It's an error that I made in putting together the Public Safety Sales Tax Debt Service Budget, but you will see the revenue is there. The Public Safety Sales Tax revenue in this debt service budget is three million, three hundred forty-nine thousand thirty-six. The two hundred and thirty thousand is missing in line item five eighty-one oh one, but when you add it, it's still a balanced budget for this debt service. This was clearly an error. If you look on, on page twenty-five, you'll see this two hundred and thirty thousand is the principal payment on bond issued two thousand seven A, and it's listed right there. It was never intended that it not be included. It was mistaken.
That's fine.
And the overall impact on the fiscal year twenty-twelve budget is it's a hundred and thirteen million, point five million dollar budget. That was understated by two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
So everything should work out okay with this fund?
Yes.
The income is correct.
The income is correct.
Okay. I, you know, sometimes they can miss when you get that.
No, it's correct. It's there.
Other questions on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eleven is an amendment, number two, from this year, for a hundred thousand dollars off the mental health board to allow receipt and expenditure of funds associated with the Just Drug Courts program. Is there approval?
Second.
By Al. Is there a second by Jan? Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, from the sheriff, a request for approval, a first extension of contract to provide special police services for the village of Sebo. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
By Steve O'Connor, seconded by John J. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Note the bets of extension. Item number ten is an amendment, number twelve, zero 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 one, out of, um, the debt service, uh, account for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, uh, to correct a fiscal twenty-twelve budget data entry error. Is there a motion for approval? By Gary. Is there a second? By Pius. Discussion. Diane?
Sorry. Um, this is a large item to the bottom of our budget, and I think maybe on our desk tonight, we have a new, um, report from you for the General Corporate Fund. Wanted to know if that was included in it, and it seems like this two hundred and thirty, the fifteen, twenty-nine, we've got a lot of things last minute that have come up, and I mean, accidents happen, and that's okay, but this is a large amount, our bottom line this year.
Okay, clarification. This report is for the General Corporate Fund. This budget amendment is on the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund. They're separate funds. This report is for fiscal year twenty-eleven. This amendment is for fiscal year twenty-twelve.
So.
You're approving amendments and transfers for both fiscal years tonight because we're in the process of closing out fiscal year twenty-eleven, but we are, as of December first, in fiscal year twenty-twelve.
Okay, but we approved that budget, did you agree?
The budget was approved in November. These bond payments, the bond principal payments are due January first. If you look on page twenty-three of your agenda package, this is an error. It's an error that I made in putting together the Public Safety Sales Tax Debt Service Budget, but you will see the revenue is there. The Public Safety Sales Tax revenue in this debt service budget is three million, three hundred forty-nine thousand thirty-six. The two hundred and thirty thousand is missing in line item five eighty-one oh one, but when you add it, it's still a balanced budget for this debt service. This was clearly an error. If you look on, on page twenty-five, you'll see this two hundred and thirty thousand is the principal payment on bond issued two thousand seven A, and it's listed right there. It was never intended that it not be included. It was mistaken.
That's fine.
And the overall impact on the fiscal year twenty-twelve budget is it's a hundred and thirteen million, point five million dollar budget. That was understated by two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
So everything should work out okay with this fund?
Yes.
The income is correct.
The income is correct.
Okay. I, you know, sometimes they can miss when you get that.
No, it's correct. It's there.
Other questions on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11 is an amendment, number two, from this year, for $100,000 off the mental health board to allow receipt and expenditure of funds associated with the Just Drug Courts program. Is there approval? By Al, is there a second? By Jan, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, from the sheriff, a request for approval, a first extension of contract to provide special police services for the village of Savoy. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
By Steve O'Connor, seconded by John J., discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up, a request approval of amendment to Airmark Agreement for Inmate Food Services. Is there a motion for approval? By Stephanie, seconded by Steve O'Connor, discussion. Carol?
The Airmark contract that we got through a few months back, actually, can we just get an update as to what the actual impact of this changed?
No.
What, the actual impacting cost will be? Okay, that's a good point. Is there a way for us to get this done as soon as this is announced?
Can't hear you, I'm sorry.
To try to get that information, the impact, because I remember the Airmark contract earlier in the year, and we actually redid an entire agreement with Airmark, but I don't know what has changed since that agreement.
Yes, we can definitely have that information for you. By next. With, with, uh, right, for next Tuesday.
Jan?
In the, it talks about the cost per meal, so it could have marked it on the census.
I can't, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
In, if we look at the, when we read, it talks about the cost per meal that Airmark took.
I think what we're asking, though, is what is the change? And we don't know what it is, because it only says what the new cost is, and I can't tell you what the old cost was. But we can provide that.
So for tonight's purposes, I'll just recommend that we move this, but not put it on consent, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, but we won't stick it on consent.
Mr. Chair, you have one.
I'm sorry?
You have one.
Oh, that's fine. So it's really not going to be on consent?
Just for the record.
Perfect. State's Attorney's Office, items under C, first is a request for authorization to designate the office of the state's attorneys, appellate prosecutor as agent. Is there a motion for approval? So moved. By James, who was the second? Steve O'Connor, discussion. Deb?
There has been a change since this agenda was put together last week. If you look on page 29, the state's attorney refers to the cost of the service as $27,000 per year, which it has been for at least the last 10 years. And if you look on page 31 in the resolution, it again refers to that $27,000. The state's attorney was notified later last week that because we are now accounting with the population of over 200,000, that that dollar amount is increasing to 30,000. So the final version of the resolution will, will indicate 30,000 instead of 27,000. I want you to know that before you go there.
Carol?
I just want to ask, maybe a question that excuse can't answer, but when we pay this almost retainer, is it more like a retainer than an actual cost?
Now, this is all we spend, and the appellate prosecutor's office handles appeals for Champaign County regardless. And so this is a huge deal.
Anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is a request for approval of litigation assistance agreements. Is there a motion for approval? By Stan, is there a second? By Stephanie, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is a request approval of renewal of victim advocacy grant for fiscal year 12. Is there a motion for approval? By Carol, is there a second? By the way, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, facilities director, request approval of waiver to the hiring freeze for a maintenance worker position. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
By Stan, is there a second? By Patsy, discussion. Patsy?
This is the other kind of appreciation question, was this an unexpected?
Yes, we had an employee resign, and we're still operating under the county board's hiring freeze resolution, which requires us to fold any position that becomes vacant open for three months. It's terribly difficult for the physical plant to manage its daily operations when it's down even one position.
Other questions, Stan?
This person resigned, I want to think on.
I think it was just recently, Alan, is that right?
Month and a half ago. Other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So the suggestion by Deb, because the assistant city attorney is here, take the item H now, I should have noted that earlier, sorry, Joe. So let's, if it's all right with you all, we'll go ahead and take the Clinton landfill issue now. And, and so the issue is a request approval of an intergovernmental agreement regarding the Clinton landfill. Under other businesses, is there a motion for approval? Question. By Al Kurtz, is there a second? By Quiz, discussion. Deb first, then Pius.
I would just point out that there is a new copy of the memo that was in the packet at your desks tonight. A part of the cost had been left out of the original documentation that's provided, so that has been updated.
Thank you, Pius.
Other rules, if you could ask Mr. Booker to come back up to the place for us to discuss his comments and to ask questions. Also, I want to, I have to abstain from this, because I am a member of the Land Order Advisory Council, which advises the Department of Government's Office and the potential litigation of legislation, which may be talked to me as a reply or abstain.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we will be abstaining. Discussion. Start with Patsy, then Al Kurtz, then Tom Betts.
Can we ask Mr. Booker questions, or do we have to assist him?
Just go ahead, we can go ahead and ask directly. Joe, you mind coming up to the podium? Thanks. And Joe, why don't you tell everybody, just to make sure they know who you are?
Yeah, I'm Assistant City Attorney Joe Hooker, and I've been kind of organizing this effort. We've been looking into attorneys, and we've been contacting other jurisdictions, and so I'm very familiar with what we're proposing to do as a legal matter, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have in that regard.
All right, Patsy?
Thank you. I have several questions, Mr. Booker. Thanks for all the work you've been doing on this. My first question is, now a number of governmental entities have come on board, but as I look at the map of the aquifer, and the counties that are involved with the aquifer, especially moving west, I notice that so far we're the only county that has been contacted, or maybe not contacted, but in discussion of joining, that they've agreed that. My question is, what about other communities that have been involved in the aquifer and other counties?
I'm quite sure you're not the only county that's been contacted about this. You're the only county that's put it on your agenda, as far as I know. And I can't speak to the specifics of that. Steve Carter's been kind of taken the lead as far as contacting, reaching out to other governmental entities. And I'm pretty sure we've contacted Macon County. I don't know what the status of their response is, but so far, and I, if this is in the report, Normal, Savoy, Champaign, and Urbana now have all authorized entering into the agreement. We're hopeful that Bloomington will authorize it. Memory serves me, I think they're going to consider it somewhere on January 3rd or something like that. And I really can't speak to, you know, the extent to which other communities are thinking about it right now. We're, we're going to continue to reach out, and as you may have noted, the intergovernmental agreement, the way it was drafted, does allow for new members to join, and so we're going to continue our efforts to bring in other people to participate. And part of that, the requirement of others to participate would be to contribute to the costs that had been incurred to date, and we would reimburse communities accordingly that had already joined the effort.
So there is a potential that our costs could go down?
Yes, absolutely.
That's where I was going, okay. The second one, the costs that you have prepared, or sharing with us, I'm assuming is for legal services only?
Yes, yes.
So there might be potentially costs connected with any studies or reports that are needed for these legal services?
There may be, although there's also a possibility we're going to be pretty much confined to the record that's been made already during public comment. To the extent would be litigating the approval of the US EPA to authorize this, my understanding is to, that we may be limited to information that's already been made part of the record, and that would include the expert testimony, or documentation, if you will, from experts about the way the aquifer functions, and the design of the proposed landfill, that sort of thing. So I, of course, one of the reasons we're wanting to hire private counsel is that those of us in-house are not that familiar with all these rules, so I don't know that I have a real clear-cut answer for how likely it is we'd be able to actually hire additional consultants with technical opinions about this.
Okay, and then my last follow-up question is, is, does the county have the option of opting in for just one year and seeing how things go, or do we have to opt in for the full amount over there?
Well, that would be pretty much however you craft your resolution. Where we are at right now is, we've actually gotten an offer, if you will, from these two attorneys that we focused in on, to provide a phase one, which would essentially be a complete review of the record to date, a review of the applicable law, and a recommendation about how to go forward. That's that $12,500 figure you have. And they had given us a ballpark of, we had a fair degree of confidence that it would not exceed $45,000 in total, as far as concluding any litigation on this. We don't have that in writing right now, but certainly you may want to craft your resolution that you'd be authorizing what would be your executive committee member to sign off on that first phase, and then wait and see what, what happens with that first phase. I mean, that would certainly be something you might want to consider.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Next up is Al Kurtz, then Tom, then Gary.
Thank you. I have a statement I'd like to read. As elected officials and the government body of Champaign County, we have a responsibility to protect the safety of our residents, their families, and children, and future generations. This is one of those times when we must take action in that respect. As Chair of the Environment Land Use Committee, and a representative of this board in our county, I and many other elected officials and concerned citizens visited the Clinton landfill. The Clinton landfill is owned by area-wide disposal. They propose to store large quantities of PCBs in this facility. This landfill is placed above the Mohammed Aquifer. PCBs have been banned by the EPA, it's too dangerous to use in our environment. We were given a tour of the entire facility, including a large pit where millions of gallons of PCBs will be stored. We were assured that this facility would never leak into the aquifer, even in the instance of a tornado or earthquake. George Rodekamp, an expert on the Illinois Water Survey and a Mohammed Aquifer consortium member, accompanied us on the trip. He's been studying the aquifer for 20 years. He wrote a non-faith report in opposition to their results. His opinion, the PCBs contaminating the Mohammed Aquifer would be too high a risk to take in this environment, especially above the only clean drinking water in central Illinois. I asked this board to join with other jurisdictions in working to stop this from taking place. If we don't take action now, it will be too late that this facility is allowed to store these carcinogens. I ask that we pass this as a development agreement. Thank you.
Tom?
Joe? So there was litigation in this landfill. How open-ended is it? And by that I mean, there's all sorts of appellate rights to start calculating costs. How, are we in a situation where we're in for a dime, we're in for a dollar?
Well, again, you would, you may want to craft however, whatever your authority is, to revisit this once, once the case is closed out of the trial ever, for example. But as in with any case, there's always possibilities for appeal, and we'd certainly want to explore that if we were unsuccessful, and frankly, I think the landfill company might very well want to explore an appeal if we succeed. So, you know, I think that's something we would have to anticipate. On the other hand, in my experience, the cost for an appeal, I suspect would be less than the cost for the actual challenge in the trial court level. Now, it's a little, a little confusing, because this is going to essentially be appealing from an administrative authorization, if that's what it comes to. But I think at the point that the federal district court makes its decision, you're going to have a pretty complete record, and my suspicion would be that costs going forward would come down as we went along, because you're basically arguing from the same record. And it would be just a matter of arguing the law, and how the law applies to the facts to, to a different group of judges. So certainly, the reality would be that there's very possibly going to be an appeal. On the other hand, you know, the landfill may say, decide, we don't want to invest any more time in this if we do successful in the federal district court, but that's some speculation about that, no question about it.
If I look at this, it turns this, it turns this $45,000 or so, save in trial, and your attorneys need a lot more information, a few more expert witnesses, and what have you, and it doesn't change, and like, who eats that bill?
Well, would be the partners who continue to join in the effort, and now, I should tell you, going to the first phase, we're going to get a, we're going to get a solid commitment, but once again, with a not-to-exceed figure, that would be our intention, as we did with phase one. So it's not going to be an open-ended situation in that regard, and we may end up paying less. And for what it's worth, these two very capable and experienced attorneys have quoted us a fee which is pretty darn reasonable in our experience. I think it's a tribute to their enthusiasm and belief in the importance of this case. They each quoted $175 an hour, which is pretty good for somebody who's an expert in the field. We had, in fact, we inquired of another firm, Brian K., which is a firm of national reach, and we were convinced they would have done a terrific job for us, but they were quoting us, you know, on the low end for their associates, $325 an hour, that sort of thing. So I guess I would just share that in the sense that I think we're going to be able to litigate this for less money than we thought we might have to spend. But, but I, you know, you're correct that there's some uncertainty as far as the cost of appeal. But at least for the litigation itself, for the district, federal district court, we're going to get to commit to a not-to-exceed figure, which I anticipate would be $45,000.
Anything else, Tom? Gary, then John, Alan, Chris. Gary, your turn.
I'm a little concerned that we don't have more active, more active counties involved in this. I would like to see that come on before we get situated to spend a lot of money. Are we at, under some sort of a deadline to initiate action on this?
We will be once the US EPA actually makes its decision, and frankly, we thought we might get a decision two months ago. So we're, we're preparing for this as if the decision could come down any day, and then the clock will start ticking as far as the time you have to file a complaint in the district court. And I understand it to be somewhere in the range of 60 days, something along those lines. So it is somewhat urgent that we get, that we're poised to start, and in fact, the plan was, if the county was going to join, we were then going to see if we could get what would be the executive committee members to actually agree to hire these two attorneys that we've identified, so they can start actually looking at the record and looking at the law in anticipation of the US EPA decision.
John, then Alan.
Thank you. The law firm that, and I'm going to refer to you, because Champaign is a lead agency with this law, potential lawsuit, you're upcoming lawsuit. The attorneys, one of which is, priori- The attorneys, one which is from Peoria, the firm from Peoria and the firm from Chicago, which this county board has a bad history with, with representation from Chicago attorneys. What, we do have a bad history, we spend a lot of money, a lot of good things, this body, that's right. What kind of track record do these law firms have and these gentlemen have that are going to be representing with such lawsuits with ISU, NEPA?
Well, Albert Edinger, Albert Edinger, who's actually technically a sole practitioner right now, he's the gentleman out of Chicago, he's litigated a number of cases under the Clean Water Act successfully. He's represented the Prairie Rivers Network on occasion, he's represented the Sierra Club. I provided to all of you who had emails with his website and I would encourage you all to visit that website. He's a very highly regarded environmental attorney who frankly charges a remarkable rate. I mean, we were pleasantly surprised when he quoted us this rate. And Mr. Wentworth, as I understand it, has actually already successfully litigated with this landfill to stop actions in Peoria. And that was the reason that Mr. Edinger contacted him in order to have more expertise specifically focused on landfill regulation. And so, and we were impressed with both attorneys when we looked into their backgrounds. And I guess the other firm I quoted you was more along the lines of what I think of as a Chicago attorney, a big national firm. And again, we think they were extremely capable, but their rates were a little too rich for our blood and we thought, you know, it'd be better to go with these two gentlemen who we think will do a very good job for us.
Has the city of Champaign contacted American Water Corporation to see if they're interested?
Yes. And I can't speak to what actual conversations have happened, but yes, we've asked them about that and they're aware of our efforts and I can't speak to what, you know, their position is on this.
But there's been no return comment then?
Not that I know of. Now, another thing to be aware of along, in that vein, is that Mohammed Valley Water Authority has actually actively been involved in making a record in opposition to this. That's an actual public body that was created with the purpose of protecting the Mohammed Aquifer. They've had an attorney that they hired out of Chicago who's been assisting them and making a very good record on this. They hired a consultant who carefully looked at the proposal, the landfill company and at their consultant's report, and they came up with a long laundry list of concerns about misrepresentations made by the landfill company and their consultant about the alleged low level of risk on this. And so, so far, I think there's a pretty good record of concerns and about technical concerns about what the proposal is and how it might affect the aquifer already at this point.
Might sing and then be part of the assistance in with this lawsuit? Their technical background, their legal?
The Mohammed Valley Aquifer?
Yes, the Mohammed Valley?
They may well. I have not talked to them specifically about it, but we, I certainly wouldn't rule out that we would join forces along those lines. It might depend on their funding. They don't have a lot of money, this is, as I understand it. And I think this was a pretty gargantuan effort on their part. You know, they have three board members and they don't, I don't, I don't even know what their revenue source is and I think they have some kind of tax revenue source, but it's pretty inconsequential compared to, you know, some of the bodies we've been contacting to join us on this. But certainly, I'm going to, I've been coordinating this with their attorney and, you know, if we can join forces, that'd be terrific and that's something we'll certainly explore.
Thank you. We'll stop in that question.
All right, John. Next up is Alan, then Chris and Jan have got you two. So Alan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm in support of the overall idea of what we're trying to get here, but I am very concerned about the level of commitment from other counties and from even incorporated areas in our county, for example, Rantoul and Mohammed. I am concerned about unincorporated portions of the county that we represent here, but there are bodies that are incorporated that should be asked to be a part of this. And I guess that's part of my, unless I'm misreading the breakout here, I think that it would behoove us to be a little fairer on this. I'm also, I'm also of the opinion, and I'm trying to read Mr. Betts' comments, but I think anybody who loses this is going to appeal. I mean, let's just face it, this is going to be appeal. So, I mean, this is, this opens the issue of where the 45,000 goes from here. I would just bet that we would appeal it. And I know that the EPA has lawyers on their payroll and we have billable hours. Now, some of you might remember the nursing home billing, as you looked at individual items from the firm that we had for their costs. And it's amazing what a photocopy costs. It's amazing what some of the charges they billed us for and, you know, we haven't seen that. I think Tom's point and along with Gary's point about expert witnesses and those kinds of things that will be tagged on to this. So, you know, this has to be crafted, I think, a little firmer on our behalf. You know, normally the procedure is, and I think that Brennan would agree, is the Chair, the ELAC committee would discuss this as to the merits of doing this, and then the Finance Committee would approve it financially. So we have skipped, and I'm satisfied that we're talking about this a little further on the basis of that, but I would have preferred that this be before ELAC first, that we would discuss it in full as to what we, how we feel about this as a project to take on and then determine whether the financial part would fit in. So we're kind of putting two things in here at once. And I don't, I am not persuaded also that we have to make a decision tonight. I frankly would rather defer this and get some committee group of all parties that should be involved in this around a table and discuss this. And Mr. Hooker could certainly put that together so that we get a feel for how many people are truly going to be involved or want to be involved or, you know, the comment, Ms. Petrie's question is, well, your rate will go down if XYZ County gets in here. I'd prefer to look at these people face to face. It's all part of negotiation. And I'd like to see the body language if they're in or out. So I'm not persuaded that we have to make a decision tonight and I'm not persuaded that we have really investigated what an appeal will cost because I am just dead sure that we'll be involved in an appeal. Thank you.
Chris, then Jan.
Mr. Hooker, what are the potential outcomes of this litigation? Assuming the EPA approves, if the EPA denies the permit, there's no litigation, right?
Right.
Unless the applicant appeals. If the EPA approves the permit, what are the possible outcomes? I mean, obviously, we could lose and the EPA could approve the permit anyway. We could win, the EPA could deny the permit outright. Is there something in between? I mean, can, would our and other counties' participation in this potentially result in strengthening the conditions of the permit or other sort of mitigating factors in this decision?
Well, our, the view of some of us have looked at this is that there's no way to reduce the risk adequately just by redesigning this landfill. In fact, I think the sense many of us have is that the applicant has, given what the current technology has proposed, something reasonable in the context of landfills generally. And I don't know whether, you know, there's anything that could be done to eliminate the risk for the long term is what our concern is. I think most of us feel that this would probably work adequately for 10, maybe even 20 years. The concern being that at some point, there's going to be a tear in one of these liners. As has already been alluded to, the soils are not completely impermeable. I mean, the evidence is just absolutely, in the contrary, that the aquifer is being regenerated from surface waters in this particular area. It takes a while, but, and that's contrary to what, you know, the suggestion has been by the applicant. So none of us that have talked about this have considered, you know, something that could be done to strengthen the design of this that, in our view, would be adequate as far as eliminating the risk to an acceptable level in response to that question.
Thank you. I apologize. This is directed to you, Mr. Hooker, but to the board. I have some degree of familiarity with the process of doing environmental remediation of sites that have been contaminated with PCBs. And I think there are a couple of things that are almost true in every circumstance. One is it's a lot harder to clean the stuff up out of the ground than it is to keep it going in the ground in the first place. Number two, whoever gets paid to store or dispose or dump this material is long gone by the time the facility leases, needs to be cleaned up, and they never have the financial resources to provide sufficient insurance or sufficient guarantees to be able to be financially responsible when there is a problem. So I think anytime the feds permit one of these things, a part of the permitting process is adversarial. I mean, I think if people who are being asked to absorb the long-term financial risk and the long-term health risk of these things aren't willing to stand up and bring suit to block these things and force the, you know, to keep the EPA honest, as it were, I think the process breaks down. I think to just accept granting of this permit on our part would be like paying sticker price. I mean, I don't think we want to take the risk in the long term for something that some outside entity is basically initiating. $14,000 may seem like a lot of money now, but it's a lot cheaper than being on the hook for, you know, potentially hundreds of millions of dollars in economic loss and cleanup costs down the road. So I will support this. I appreciate Mr. Nudo's comments about trying to get other counties on board, but, you know, realistically, we can sit across the table with, you know, smaller villages and cities in the area all day long, but I think they're going to be looking to the larger cities and larger counties to take the lead on this. I would definitely encourage the lead, City of Champaign's lead agency to pursue those if we do approve this. But I think, you know, we've got to step up and for $14,000, this seems like money well spent to me. Thank you.
Jan, and then Stan, who's all around the world and now I've got you.
Sitting, listening to all of the previous, there's several things to mind, Mr. Nudo's comments about going to ELAC. I think we had the discussion under ELAC a couple of months ago when we did the resolution not favoring using the Clinton landfill for disposal of these kinds of ways. And then I have to ask, why do we want to wait for other counties? They may be still having the discussion waiting for other counties, including us. Why couldn't we be a leader and help bring them on? And if I remember some of the news accounts, we were not the only county that passed resolutions against using the Clinton landfill for these kinds of ways. So I think there has been sentiment out there to speak to whether we're doing the kind of thing we are, but if we are seeing this as going in this direction, perhaps that would persuade them to do this also. And I appreciate Mr. Alex's comments, but I do kind of wonder about the cost of, when you talk about cleaning up. I'm not sure that if we had a problem with this getting into the aquifer, that you can really do it clean up. And I don't know if you can speak to that or perhaps we've talked, is it Mr. Winston Lee, is that the name? Whether he could comment on this. I know prior to the resolution, a number of us went out to the Fonger Building and maybe that was why we still had separate ELAC committee and saw a presentation on the aquifer, how it formed and better understand it. I don't remember all that they told us, but it seemed to me from what I do remember that if you get these sorts of things into the aquifer, I'm not sure that it's possible to even clean up. I'm at the age that when those problems arise, I may be long gone, but I do care about my children and my grandchildren, my uncle will still be there and that they will still have clean water to drink. And I can't help but think of the, I think this would apply to all of that age about being penny wise but powerful, which that's why I think we're going to need support.
I don't want to speak to the technical issue you just raised. My perception is that, you know, from a common sense standpoint, it would be very, very difficult to clean up if you're talking about contamination.
Yeah.
And Stanley can probably address that much more effectively than I could.
Could you please, so I don't think we need a waiver of the resolution, just if you could come up to the mic, please. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, it would be virtually impossible to clean up if the Mohammed Aquifer got contaminated several hundred feet below the ground. We have a hard enough time cleaning up contamination in shallow aquifers, you know, a few tenths of feet below the surface, but several hundred feet directly below a landfill, I don't see any way it could be cleaned up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I still have a few for round one, Stan then Brad. I've got a couple others, don't worry, I got you.
Well, I'm sitting here listening to all this and I know that this project's been ongoing for some time and we're stepping into the plate where I consider it the last mile and trying to halt something that's been ongoing, which is fine. I mean, I don't support the concept of what they're doing, but when I look at the attorney costs and everything that we're talking about and I hear all the figures we're going out and what Alex said and Jan said, there's been litigation that this county's been involved in and every time we get close to the bullpen, they say, oh, wait a minute, we're going to need 50,000 more, we're going to need 100,000 more, or like you said, a bill. We're talking about taxpayer's money. We're not talking about money that all of us will write out our checkbooks. So we have to be mindful of that. We can't just say it's a good thing, this is what we're going to do. I sometimes think that we're all remiss that we sit here and tout all this wisdom, that as this ball of wax was opening up, who all was going over there to voice their concerns and many people did. I don't always agree with the EPA. I don't always agree with things that are done, but those are the laws and they set them and yes, we can find them and everybody can appeal them, but it's always someone else that's paying for our logic, that now we want to enter this and say, we are going to save you. So I have a problem with that. And then the other thing is, it seems like no matter what man does, whether it be lead paint, whether it be asbestos, whether it be anything, 10 years from now, 15 years from now, we're cleaning up, the technology changes and it's harmful to all of us. I agree that I do not want to see my water tainted, but experts, and there's experts just like lawyers, it's an opinion, everybody's going to give you their side on what the story is and we have to figure it out as to the best of our ability. So I for one, since we're late in this game and nobody was pounding the drum when it started saying, hey, we ought to be on the bandwagon, we ought to be going to some of these meetings, we ought to be researching this more, it seems like we're throwing up a stopgap measure to something that's been rolling along. And I would remind this group that not too long ago, we all supported an ethanol plant that was going to be located in one of our areas, which was going to pump tons of water out of the aquifer, that it was going to bring jobs. How different is that to the people on the outside thinking, let's fight that counter? So sometimes we need to stop and think, and yes, we need to worry about it, but if we're going to be involved, let's do it from day one, not at day 58.
Brad, Stephanie, Michael. Brad?
Yeah, Mr. Hooker, I want to ask you a question, just what Stan was talking about there, because in our contest, there was a large opinion that it's a waste of time to try to fight the EPA and they were making a decision, it's a waste of time. So I wanted to ask, that is true in your estimation, but also if you would point out again, what happened in Peoria and what stage were they in when they were able to stop a seven-year standing or a reclamation in Peoria?
Yeah, and I apologize, I don't remember the details, but they were, I think I'm right about this, I think they initially wanted to get this permit in Peoria and they were unsuccessful doing it there. And I can't tell you why precisely. All I can tell you is that Mr. Wentworth was involved in that and that's one of the reasons that Mr. Edinger thought he would be a very valuable resource to have on his legal team. So I just don't know the answer, I don't know all the background on that.
So you're saying that Peoria was successful in stopping the EPA? So, you're saying that Peoria was successful in stopping EPA?
Yeah, and I don't, and again, I don't know why they were successful. It might be, I don't, I don't know that it had anything to do with the aquifer, for example. So, I apologize for being so vague. I just don't know the real particulars about that.
Stephanie, then Michael, then Lloyd. Stephanie?
I have two questions, one for you, Mr. Hooker, and if it's all right, may I ask Mr. Winston Stanley a question?
Sure.
Mr. Hooker, with your area of expertise, do you believe that if, with what you've seen, should we, as a county, not come up with a resolution to cap absolutely what we would be willing to participate in dollar-wise?
Well, at this point, and I guess I'd like to try to convey to you how tricky this is to coordinate reaching out, talking to attorneys, trying to make assessment of this, and then pulling together, you know, six, eight different local governments and have them debate this, and go through their legislative process. So, we've been trying to coordinate this in kind of a rational way. At this point, as I understand it, the intergovernmental agreement draft that's been approved by Urbana, Champaign, Normal, and Savoy assumes that the county is going to approve, to go forward. In other words, to the extent the county decides not to go forward, I think the four of us need to go back to the drawing board and reassess what our position is. That's just kind of, just the lay of the land. I mean, and there's no perfect way to do this. I mean, we can, at one point, we wanted to identify a court group and just move ahead. I mean, we could, we could be talking to jurisdictions for the next six months, and in the meantime, you know, all our ability to litigate will have evaporated because of, you know, statutes of limitation and that sort of thing. So, at this point, the notion was to try to have these five entities join forces, move ahead, hire their attorneys, continue to work with other jurisdictions. We think there's a very good chance Bloomington will join us even before the attorneys are hired, but it's kind of a tricky timing issue, if that kind of answers your question.
Thank you. Mr. Winston Stanley, could you please step up? Do you have any knowledge of other communities within the country, in the state of Illinois, possibly this evening with you, that the U.S. EPA has approved anything like this before, or is, excuse me, if anyone has taken the EPA to litigation regarding a decision like this? Do you know of anything other than Peoria, whether or not they have won their litigation or lawsuit?
One of the motivations in creating an additional toxic waste landfill is the initiative that President Obama signed in 2009, requiring cleanup of the Great Lakes and associated rivers in the region. A lot of the waste that is likely to come to the landfill will be sediments from Lake Michigan and from rivers like Illinois River, Saginaw River, and so on. Within the Great Lakes region, there are three other toxic waste sites with a total storage capacity of about 60 million cubic yards. The Clinton landfill would add an additional 2.5 million cubic yards to that total, sort of an additional 16 percent. The other sites are in Detroit, Buffalo, and one other, I can't remember. But in addition to the Great Lakes, the PCBs could come into Clinton from anywhere in the country. It would be transport costs that would be the only prohibitive factor. There are other cases of communities fighting U.S. EPA on PCB problems. I don't have the details with me, but I do remember one major case in Carolinas, where communities fought long and hard and did, were successful against EPA in fighting PCB contamination. If you wish, I can check that out further, but I know there are places where they have fought it successfully.
Thank you.
Michael, then Lloyd, and that's all I've got on round one, so if you need, okay, then Steve O'Connor. Michael?
My colleagues made some very good points about cost. We might want to make sure we have a, do not exceed on this for the $12,687.69, this listed as the high point. But I wanted to speak to the fact that we, I think that we need to approve this at some point tonight. I know Macon County, McLean County, and Bloomington are all looking at this in one way or the other, and I have, maybe they're waiting, maybe they're waiting to see what other entities are doing. So, I think we need to show some leadership. Joe, I want to commend you, as Steve Carter and the city, for the extraordinary amount of leadership that the City of Champaign has been showing over the last year on this. The amount of, for those of us trying to push public knowledge of this issue and public comment a few months ago before the deadline, the amount of detail and work that you guys obviously put into the City of Champaign statement was just amazing, and I want to congratulate you on pushing leadership on this again and getting this together. And I hope that we will end up joining you even after we've exhausted some of our fiscal concerns, because this, this is not a matter that we can let stand. Honestly, I don't think that any of us in this room could trust the U.S. EPA. The EPA itself has said that PCBs are carcinogen, and they refuse to say that, over time, that this toxic waste landfill is going to be completely secure, just as they did with hydraulic fracturing fluids across the country. And now we already, just a few years into frac, natural gas fracking, as it's called, have fracking chemicals showing up in water supplies in Wyoming after they got the same, after they got the same assurances from the U.S. EPA that you'll probably be okay. So, I just want to remind everybody that EPA decisions are subject to the same court review as anything else, and that we, we don't want to let this fall through, and once a decision comes through, have any chance that this, that we're just going to let this stand, and somehow this breaks apart, and basically, if the Mohammed Aquifer region, if central Illinois loses this one, that there's no one to appeal to. I hope we'll show some, some leadership like the City of Champaign has, and in some measure, well-approved that this intergovernmental agreement's not.
Lloyd, then Steve O'Connor, then Carol, and then Ryan.
Well, Lloyd, you're on. Mr. Richard kind of gave you something like, but I can't understand, I thought EPA was our main source of keeping us from getting poisoned. What I'm saying, I can't understand, why can't we get some kind of feedback from that agency for getting rid of?
Good luck with that.
One more question, who are their boss? Who regulate EPA? Well, all I hear is time after time, we go to that agency, and we get nothing, but still get poisoned. So, it's about time, if they can't fess up, let's get rid of them.
Steve O'Connor, then Carol.
Well, I wonder if I've been laboring under a wrong impression. I was told that EPA approval was past tense. It had been done. That's not what I'm hearing now.
The state EPA has already approved this. That's a little bit confusing. The Illinois Environmental Protection Agency has already approved this under their standards, and because this is covered by the Toxic Substance Control Act, the federal EPA has the last word on it. In fact, the state, I think, kind of defers to the U.S. EPA, as I understand it, even though they've approved it. But that, that may be what you've heard, that the state's EPA did, in fact, approve it under their process.
Are those the same people that are worried about combine dust?
I couldn't tell you.
Anything else, Luke? All right. We've got Carol, then Diane, in round one, Jen.
I just want to ask Ms. Ducey if she can just give us an idea of, if this passes, will this revenue come?
Yeah, it's in the memo, but the recommend, I really think the only option you have is to amend the county board's fiscal 2012 budget to increase it by the amount of whatever you decide you want to spend.
And we would increase it from the general corporate fund balance.
Keep in mind, your share will be just a portion of that, I mean, if we have these five approved, so.
Okay, Diane?
I have a question. The three entities, Normal, Champaign, and Urbana, come up to about 68 percent of the population, which means the balance comes from the smaller communities and the unincorporated areas. What would happen if we did not participate, and then later, maybe, decided to say, okay, we'll help you out here? I mean, is this something you have to be in or out? No down vote?
I would be the last person to predict what Champaign, Urbana, and Savoy would do if the county didn't go ahead. I, I guess, my own hope is we would go ahead, and, but we'll need to go back to those bodies and let them decide. That wouldn't be our, my decision, or anyone else's, as an administrative matter, and the corporate bodies of each agency would need to recalibrate and make that decision.
Thank you.
I have one more yet for round one, and that's Aaron.
Just had a quick question. I guess we've maybe more, Mr. Stanley. Hearing that the current Clinton landfill already has, is accepting PCBs, now granted, it's a lower acceptable parts per million or whatever, is there any guarantee we can't get polluted from what's already there? So, we've potentially already got a land, a mine sitting over our offer already. Granted, I don't want even another land mine sitting there, but it sounds to me like we've already got one there. I don't know, it's just a point to bring up, that it's already there. Sounds to me like, I mean, yeah, this is a bigger batter bomb that could maybe, you know, hit us even harder, but we've already got this, it's already there.
Is there anyone else who has not spoken yet to this that would like to speak before we go to repeat offenders? Okay, so the order, just three of them so far, Al Kurs, then Patsy, then Alan.
Okay. I've been, I've been sitting here, listening to this, and it's hard for me to envision an elected official going before its residents in a, an election campaign and saying to them, well, we didn't want to spend $12,000 to protect you from the possibility of toxic drinking water for your children and grandchildren. To the, oh, no. Yes, come on. Excuse me. The risk is too high for us not to spend the dollars that it takes to try and prevent this. Now, I am going to answer some questions and some concerns. Mr. Nudo said, why didn't it go through ELOC or policy? Why finance? Well, we sat down and discussed that. We wanted to know which committee should have taken care of this issue. We felt because there were dollars involved, that it should go through finance and full discussion, as we had tonight. So, we did discuss this with Ms. Ducey and vice versa. Cheers. Secondly, Stan, I'll tell you, you talk about taxpayers. What is our job? Our job is to use those tax dollars to secure the safety of our residents. Are we going to follow some of the small incorporated areas, or are we going to lead this community? They, they look up to us as leaders. Our goal here is the protection of our residents and its future. I stepped out on that landfill and stepped onto those, to that pit, and I looked down in it, and I said to myself, what if an earthquake or tornado came and ripped this thing apart? What happens in 30 years from now when this company's no longer there to protect this area of our water? I'll be long gone, but my grandchildren will be here, and maybe their children and grandchildren will be here, and they'll look back and say, why the heck didn't that board spend $12,000 to protect us? Or whatever it costs. We spend money on everything. The nursing home, it's a building. We're talking about 650,000 people and clean drinking water. We've seen water go bad in other parts of the country, and we're willing to sit here and discuss money? When we're talking about lives? I'm sorry, but we have to look at the long term here. The long term is a risk of our drinking water being toxic. That's all I have.
Yeah, Patsy, then Alan, then John, and then Jan.
Mr. Richard, thank you.
I have an information question. I looked up the case.
Call it a question.
I looked up the case in Peoria, and I noticed that included in the suit was not only the U.S. EPA, but also the Illinois EPA and the Illinois Pollution Control Board. Is, are those other two agencies part of what you all are thinking, including in the suit, or just the U.S. EPA?
We, one of the tasks we've given in our proposal, in our request for proposals to the two attorneys, is to actually look at the record for the IEPAs as well, to see if there's any irregularities in there that are worth challenging. I don't understand that the Pollution Control Board has been involved in any manner at this point, and, yeah.
Next up is Alan.
I want to thank everybody for their concerns about political races, but I'm just wondering if we need to have some measure of what we want to craft as a resolution here. I'm on record as saying I'm in favor of this project, but I think we need to do it judiciously and understand that we are going to take on a certain level of commitment here, as Mr. Richards said, as Ms. Petrie said, and Mr. Alex said. I think we need a resolution that, and Mr. Hooker agreed, that we either tonight, or in a date certain, maybe the next ELEC meeting, we have a resolution that outlines what our responsibility is. As an example, maybe you say we're going to spend the $12,000, and we'll have another vote on this as a progressive measure to see where we are and how much we support the next level of cost. And, and so what I'm saying here is, we have in front of us a request for an intergovernmental agreement, but as Mr. Hooker said to some of Ms. Petrie's questions and Mr. Alex's questions, we have the ability to craft something that we want, that we're comfortable with, and make sure that we know what we're getting into. And I am very concerned also of your comment, that if there are other agencies or counties that are going to get involved, that, you know, if we're going to be a leader in this, then our cost goes down and allows us to make decisions for the next, for the appeal and anything else that comes up. So, you know, we don't need to have an emotional comment, as far as, yeah, I understand that, but I think we just need to make sure that what we're doing fits in with what we know, legal costs that become with nursing homes and the kinds of things that we have seen those bills, and said, how did we get into this morass? So, I'm just saying, let's make this something that we can get accomplished, and it may be tonight, as Mr. Richards would like, or maybe at the ELEC meeting, where some measure of people that would like to get involved in this resolution have something in front of us that's more concrete as to what we're voting on. Thank you.
But I'm a little, a little worried about all the discussion that's happening that's a little distracting to people who are trying to listen to the main speaker. If we can keep it at least limited, I'd appreciate that. John is up.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. I think there's some misconception with some questioning, and my questioning has been, Mr. Hooker particularly, who's involved, or who's been asked since Champaign, Champaign's lead agency, that I think the questioning is, is who's been asked to be involved? I asked, has American Water Company been asked? Has Iroquois County Board been asked? Has Moore County Board, you know, that, that area up there is a lot of recharge, those northern counties, that's where most of the sand... northern counties, that's where most of the sandy soils are, that's where the quicker recharge is. You know, just asking if, if those have been asked to come in. I, I don't think there's a problem with this county potentially showing leadership as a municipality, lead county, but I'm just wondering, has, who's been asked to join in with this intergovernmental agreement?
And again, I'm sorry, I just don't know the answer to that. I know that, I know that dictators have been lobbied to join us, and I believe Macan County has as well. I don't, I can't speak to Iroquois County, I'm getting all this information secondhand. I guess one thing I'd ask you to consider, and I, and I think those are, you know, reasonable questions, is that at some point, we have to make this manageable to initiate it. And, for example, if we had an intergovernmental, I mean, just, and I've just been thinking about this in abstract terms, just trying to organize this, if we had an intergovernmental agreement that, you know, had, you know, 10 bodies of government that potentially might join, and everybody approved with the expectation that all 10 joined, it makes it even more complicated. One, one body changes their mind, everybody goes back to the drawing board, so it's, and that's not that at all discount your concern that how come we're not hearing from other jurisdictions? I certainly appreciate that some of that.
Well, that's what's hearing from them, but have they been lobbied to be involved with this?
I think most of the, most of the affected communities have, I believe. Now, I, Iroquois County, I don't recall seeing any information about that.
Same in the county?
Yeah, I, yeah, and I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm just, I'm not the person who's been doing that outreach, so I don't have an answer for you specifically.
Yeah, you know, I think Mr. Nudo would phrase it perfectly, and I'll stand behind what Mr. Nudo says, and I won't bother anybody else, thanks.
First of all, Deb, to speak to the issue and then going on the list.
Just an answer to your question, I am aware that McLean, Macan, and Sangin County's were all contacted with regard to this, and I actually even had direct communication with the administrator of McLean County, they've not yet put it on the agenda though.
Thank you. Got a Jan, then Quiz, then Stan. Jan.
I could support a resolution.
Quick.
Perhaps would say, someone said first phase, would you consider what we've got on here, the first phase? When I heard Mr. Richards mention Wyoming and fracking, I was tracking the involved other chemicals, but being in Pennsylvania twice this last year, and the state that opened up the gate to fracking and their workplaces opting in, and there were articles back there of numerous small entities that were having water problems, that the individual wells and small city wells and like that, so they, they stayed put a moratorium on them, and that's not the same issue as here, but it's similar in some ways. The EPA has never, you know, been successful in finding them, and I think it is, and I see this as a big problem too, but I don't know if you want to rip a motion to-
Up to the body.
To-
There's an existing motion.
The motion is with, provides that we support this first phase and then we would reevaluate that, so, seem like a reasonable rate?
I'm not sure I understand what your suggested motion would be.
Can I ask Joe a question?
Yeah.
The intergovernmental agreement, if the county board adopted a resolution to participate in Phase One, which has been voted by the law firm as not to exceed 12,500, and with the total cost, I mean, to the county, it's about $3,000. How, do the, can they then approve this intergovernmental agreement, or should they simply approve a resolution documenting that to communicate to the members of this intergovernmental agreement of their desire to assist?
Maybe, maybe an approach that would kind of salvage this intergovernmental agreement in its current form would be to something akin to limiting the authority of your executive committee member to approve the next phase without further county action. The way this is structured, and this is partly to make it more efficient, is, the notion is that the, actually, the executive committee members, one from each body that's participating, would vote on whether to actually hire a particular law firm or expert or not. And so, seems like one way you might address this in the intergovernmental agreement is just make it clear that your executive committee member would not have just administrative authority to do that on his or her own, and would rather have to come back to the board with a specific proposal, and along the lines that we have for the first phase.
And you think we could document that within the current intergovernmental agreement as amendment before the board would approve this?
I think that would just be in your resolution of approving the intergovernmental agreement, wouldn't be in the body of the agreement itself.
There, there's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait one because Quiz is the only one who's not had a chance to talk to this issue yet, but there has been a call, a call for the question. I'm gonna let Quiz speak his piece first.
All right, now, first of all, I'm gonna say that I am, I believe that we as a county should participate in this, but I do have, I do have a question with regard to how, how we arrive at the methodology for how the costs would be split. Were there any other methodologies that we reviewed, such as maybe water usage from the aquifer?
No, no, we just looked at population, and we modeled this on an intergovernmental agreement we had to intervene in a couple of ICC cases, rate cases, some of that, and the answer would be no, we didn't really look at alternatives.
Because it would be my suspicion that we're doing this off of total population, and it'd be my suspicion that a large amount of the rural population is, is getting water from shallow wells and not contributing to the usage from the aquifer. So, I think we all are in this, but we used population as a, as somewhat of an arbitrary way to break this down, maybe a more even participation cost would be doing.
Well, yeah, before I respond to that, let me address this intergovernmental agreement thing. I don't want to, realizing I might be confusing the issue here, the current intergovernmental agreement requires a majority vote to go to the next level or to hire anyone. So, even if your executive committee member didn't want to go on to the next phase, you'd be committed to this unless you, I suppose you could come back and just withdraw from the agreement. Anybody can terminate their participation, that's possible in the agreement too, and maybe that would be, and I guess I would just share with everybody, we're certainly going to be very transparent and give everybody plenty of advance notice about what kind of a quote we get for any further phases on this. I mean, we certainly appreciate, and Champagne's in the same boat as you folks are, we, we're, money's tight for us too. So, we're very, very sensitive to the idea that, you know, any, any participants in here are going to have a say and an opportunity, if need be, to actually withdraw if they think the costs are getting too high. I mean, that's, that's got to be built, and that is built into the intergovernmental agreement. So, you know, there's some unknowns there. We did get a quote that is not official at this point of a cap of $45,000 to litigate to the completion, but frankly, that, that's subject to possible change after they actually look at the record. And so, going forward in this, it's going to be incumbent upon us to be very transparent, give everybody plenty of advance warning about, you know, what the next phase is going to cost, and for that matter, give everybody an opportunity to decide whether they want to withdraw or not. I think that would be your protection.
Anything else, Quiz?
Well, at this point, before I yield the floor, I guess I have a, I have a question as to whether we want to vote on this at this point or defer it to the next, the next opportunity. I understood that we have, once the ruling comes down, we have 60 days, which would be well within a period of time that we could address this in a future ELOC meeting. I've heard discussion about perhaps amending this to just limit our participation to the Phase One. I know, I know Tom wants to call the question, but there, there are some questions out there that haven't, haven't been resolved.
At this point, I, I know that there are a couple of other speakers that wanted one of round two, there's one that wants a round three, and we've been, we've taken this a ways. There's the opportunity to call the question, this is a cow, it can be further discussed at the full board at that point, and Tom has, has suggested a calling of the question, but a couple others need to agree with that for the question to be called from a parliamentary standpoint. And so, if I'm hearing anyone else saying to call the question, then, then we will, that's Lorraine, and is there anyone else that wants to call the question? And Alice called for a roll call, does anybody else want a roll call?
Well, quite a parliamentary procedure, are we asking for a roll call on the call of the question?
We are going, we, the question is being called, it is on the issue of the intergovernmental agreement, and there's going to be a roll call.
There's a two-thirds vote required to call the question, if I'm not mistaken.
All those in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries, we're calling the question. So, on the floor is the request of the approval of an intergovernmental agreement regarding the Clinton landfill permit, and there's been a request to, to call roll on this. Does anyone, everyone understand what we're voting on?
No.
We're voting on the issue at hand, the requesting approval of the intergovernmental agreement.
Well, Mr. Chairman, could I ask one question?
Sure, go ahead.
Now, I want to support this.
It has to be about, about this, this issue, what's-
It is about this issue.
All right, we, good, a good point. We can't discuss because the question's been called.
Well, how are you expecting me to vote for it?
Mr. Parliamentarian-
That's, that's be real.
Hold on, excuse me, Mr. Parliamentarian.
Question's been called, there's no further discussion, it's the rules.
Okay, so the parliamentarian has ruled that the question's been called, so we have to vote.
Can you re-see the question? I think I've done it a couple times.
It's, it's a request for the approval of an intergovernmental agreement regarding the Clinton landfill permit, the agenda. It's, it's, has everyone, has everyone read their packets? There, there's no other discussion? Call the roll, please.
There's no way to substitute motion.
The question's been called, please call the roll.
Bets?
Yes.
Carter?
No.
Corr?
Yeah.
Esri?
No.
Holderfield?
No.
James?
No.
Jay?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Hertz?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Michaels?
No.
Nudo?
No.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Petrie?
No.
Whistonberry?
Yes.
Rosales?
Yes.
Let's skip Richards, sorry, Richards. Schrader?
No.
Wy, Alex?
Yes.
Ammons?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Benzel?
No.
And McGinty?
Yes.
13 to 10, that motion passes. Good discussion. Joe, thanks very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
When this comes up again at the full board meeting, we can put in substitute motions then for further requirements.
And this is not hidden consent, so it's just going to be an agenda item on full, at the full board.
Thank you.
Next up is county administrator, next up is a county administrator, let's move on, please.
The 2011 General Corporate Fund revenue and expenditure projection report is at your desk this evening. At this point, we have 11 months of revenue and probably 11 and a half months of expenditure. We are projecting that we will end fiscal year 2011 with somewhere in the vicinity of a $500,000 to $600,000 revenue positive position, which is good news, considering the outstanding loan to the nursing home. This puts our fund balance right at 10 percent for fiscal year 2012, which is an improvement over where we started, obviously, fiscal year 2011. There are no changes to the budget change report.
Any questions? Motion by Carol to accept and place on file, second by Geraldo, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
There is no Harrison Harris report.
Thanks very much. Aldridge monthly report, anyone who accepted, place on file. That's in the pack, yeah? By Geraldo, second by Lorraine. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Dan, I said it'd be short for you because we're first in the attendance. I've noted what you told me.
Don't break our pillows, Dan.
I'll be quick. My monthly report's on my website, or the webpage, county webpage, I should say. The only one to highlight was that the end of November, we did repay, General Corp repaid the $1 million loan from public safety, so that's been repaid, so if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. If not asked, if my report be accepted, place on file, please. Second question by Brad, second by Al, any questions for Dan? Steve?
Dan, I read in the paper where Vermillion got a couple of big checks back to back, have we got another one coming?
That's what I'm told, yeah, we got the 895, and I understand 1.9 million should be on the way soon. Outstanding, any other questions for Dan? Jan?
Just comment that Mr. Spadato sent out an email today indicating that the county, Vermillion County, got their IGT payment today, and so they're cutting the checks, and he was hopeful that we would get ours this week, so hopefully.
Anything else for Dan? Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other business? Items, there is no chairs report, items for consent are all under A except for number three, four, and nine. Only B1 goes on consent, all of the items under C1, 2, and 3, and D1, that's it. Oh, D doesn't go. That's it from Finance, thanks.
Policy has, for you, item A1 appointments, Mr. Y will Champagne Southwest continue?
December 1, 24th to December 31st, 2016, my nomination is Mr. John Dempsey.
Second.
Second, Mr. Whistonberry. Any discussion on this?
Request a roll call.
Request a roll call. Please second for a roll call.
Second.
Any other discussion on this appointment, Mr. McEntire?
I'm just going to say that I don't, I have not seen the usefulness of this, this board at all. I'm going to vote no, just, just to make a statement. I, I don't know what they're doing, I don't know if they're dealing with transportation at all. We've been dealing with this for a long time, I know we keep making the appointment, but what a waste, what a waste. So, I'm just, I'm just tired of dealing with something that's not even doing anything with transportation at all.
Chair, why?
To point out that under the rules of transportation, if you do not replace the person, the person in that capacity, and I would stay there, so I, I made this, one reason I made this nomination was to get some fresh blood on that board.
Any other discussion on this appointment? Clerk, would you call the roll?
Bets?
No.
Carter? Carter?
Yes.
Covert?
No.
Esri?
Yes.
Holderfield?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Jones?
No.
Kurtz?
No.
Maxwell?
Yes.
McGinty?
No.
Michaels?
Yes.
Mudo?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Petrie?
Yes.
Wissenberry?
Yes.
Richards?
No.
Rosales?
No.
Schrader?
No.
Wyble?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Benzel?
Yes.
Ammons?
No. That motion carries. Number 2, Champagne County Supervisor Assessment Term 12/1, 2012.
Correct.
January 1, 2012 through December 31, 2015.
I am pleased to nominate Mr. Stan Jenkins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kurtz. Any discussion on this nomination? CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition? That motion carries. Item 3, Champagne County Landfill Board to Vacancies Term of January 1, 2012, to 12/31, 2015. Mr. Wyble?
My nomination is Mr. Lawrence Henry, you say what you believe?
Second.
Second by Ms. Covert. Any discussion on that item? All in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition? Motion carries. Item 4, Two Miles Slough?
Slough.
Slough. Drainish District. Letter of resignation from Lyndon Warfield.
Warfield.
Warfield. Mr. Wyble, do we need to-
I just have to note that the-
We just note the resignation, Mr. Warfield. Thank you. Number 5, Two Mile-
Slough.
Slough, S-L-U-G-M-E, right. Drainish District. One vacancy, unexpired term ending August 3, 2013. Mr. Wyble?
My nomination is Mr. Mark D. Yaleski?
Yaleski.
That's nowhere near correct. Is it a second to that nomination? Mr. Schrober seconded that nomination. Any discussion on the nomination? CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition? That motion carries, thank you. Willow Branch, Drainish District. One vacancy, unexpired term ending August 31, 2014. Mr. Wyble?
I nominate Mr. Stephen Maddick for this vacancy. I also move that this body, finding the best interest of the district, that the part of ownership of land in the district be waived.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bets. Mr. Wyble?
Mr. Maddick has been part of the Drainish District for 30 years. He does not own a property outright, but he was part of the property. I think that's good enough to do it. Again, we have this problem with a small district, and it's hard to find the elderly people. Therefore, I support Mr. Maddick, and I appreciate the board's involvement.
Thank you, Mr. Schrober.
Look down to that. I understand that the Commissioners are looking, but that as a sub is a concub branch. So with the addition of Mr. Maddick, that would be a sub of a concub branch.
Any other discussion? CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition? Motion carries. Item 7, Rural Transportation Advisory Group. Three vacancies, term 12/1, 2011 through 11/30, 2013. Mr. Wyble?
I nominate mine, Jackson, Chris Brown, and Lorraine Fledger.
Second.
Second by Mr. James. Discussion on this item. Please nominate. CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. One item appointed in the addendum is item 8, A8, County Board Liaison to Access Initiative Coordinating Council. One vacancy, term 12/2011 through 11/30, 2012. Mr. Wyble?
I nominate Mr. Geraldo Rosales, who I thank for giving the question in his first interest.
Second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Second. Mr. Middle Point, please. Mr. Wyble?
I would ask that Mr. Rosales report to the Policy, oh, sorry, the Justice Social Service Area of kind of cases and reports. If they're running for Mr. McRae, so we can put that in the evaluation.
Thank you. Any discussion on this nomination? All in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition? That motion carries. Back to item B, County Administrator.
The vacant positions listing is in your packet for your information. The second item is a recommendation for revisions to the personnel policy. These recommended changes are to bring our policy in compliance with current EEO legislative guidelines.
Did it ask for a motion to approve that?
It's a move.
Motion by Mr. Bets. Second? Aaron, seconded, thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Ms. Petrie?
Thank you very much. I would like to make a motion of Page 130, the first highlighted paragraph, to add the word "age." I'm sure that was just a little by chance. But it's part of the EEOC.
It is there. After national order.
Oh, it is, sorry. Blip draw.
Any other discussion on this item? CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition? Thank you. That motion carries. B3.
The workforce profile is in your packet, it's for your information. I still have Amanda Tucker, our HR Generalist, is here, if any of you has any questions about that.
Motion to accept? Move to be received and placed in file.
Second.
Thank you. I saw Ms. Seven and Holderfield take Mr. Bets as a second one. Discussion? CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition? Thank you, that motion carries. County Clerk? Monthly reports?
Move to accept and place both on file?
Second.
That's the monthly things reporting, so my only report has been seconded by Mr. Wissenberry. Discussion on these items? CNN, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item 3, Request Approval of Resolution to Establish Places of Election. The County Clerk is here in case you have questions, too. I'll entertain a motion for that.
Second.
Mr. Wyble, that's moved, and Mr. James seconded. Questions?
I have a question, Mr. W- I'd like to do this by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Wyble, if you can start with a question.
Could you allow, perhaps, to say, like, how many changes have you made? Are you going to classify? How many can you classify?
How many changes we have made? I didn't actually count them.
Did you add more, add some, combine some?
In, in, in broad terms, we're trying to do a number of things with, with the plan that I've asked you to consider tonight. We, of course, redistricted precincts. In June or July, you passed new precinct boundaries for Champagne County. We increased the number of precincts from 117 to 118. So the addition of a precinct alone requires a new polling place, especially because we created a new precinct in St. Joseph, where there had previously been two precincts in that township, and we now need a third polling place in St. Joseph. We also made a number of changes to existing precinct boundaries, especially in the outlying areas of the City of Champagne and City of Urbana, and Champagne Township, and Southwest City of Champagne, and in Urbana Township, and in Southeast Cunningham Township. Those changes, in some cases, shifted population boundaries enough that we wanted to consider some new polling places. Most importantly, as we, as we anticipate what we expect will be near-record or record voter turnout for next November's general election, we are asking you to consider decoupling, splitting apart a number of the consolidated polling places. Polling places where you've consolidated two precincts into one polling place over the years for budgetary reasons. We are doing that because the anticipated voter load, and because we have now on hand, due to the campus early voting center that we were required to have last November, we now have on hand the equipment necessary to run up to a maximum of 102 polling places in Champagne County, and then also have 12 tabulators on hand to run early voting here at Brookins in our office, and then also have 12 tabulators on hand as backups and/or to run off-site early voting for the November general election, should we choose to go in that direction. We, we can expand from our traditional 95 or 96 polling places in Champagne County to the 101 that I'm recommending at a relatively minimal budget impact. The budget impact will be small enough that we can absorb it in the existing budget that you've already passed for our office. Some of the additional expenses will be, will be a handful more election judges for the county, but given that we're anticipating eight or 900 election judges serving Champagne County next November regardless, about twice what we normally use, an additional dozen or two dozen to staff extra polling places is not necessarily an undue burden. It would not result in extra ballot printing costs, because we print ballots for precincts, not for polling places. It will result in a little bit of additional expense for facility rental, but we pay our polling places the whopping sum of $25 in rent for the day anyway. So the additional six or seven polling places is not going to be anything that's going to break the bank. It will add some ancillary costs in terms of our election notices. Our election notice will be longer, because it may have six more polling places than it, than it used to have. And our distribution cost may be a little bit higher, because we'll have to hit six additional facilities as we distribute election equipment for elections. We're asking you to make these changes now, to adopt this plan now for both elections in 2012, because as you know, we intend to distribute new voter identification cards to every registered voter in the county in January. And on those voter registration cards, those voter identification cards, we will have all of their new district numbers post-redistricting. Hopefully, Urbana School District will pass a district map tonight and save us about $12,000 bucks. We'll have all their new district numbers, we'll have their new precincts, if they happen to be in new precincts, we'll have their levy bodies, which districts they are in, and then we would also like to include their new polling places. Changes to polling places are not something that we recommend lightly. As I said, there's a, there's a minor, but still significant budget impact when you consider where the budgetary straits that the county is in. It is also a significant disruption for those voters who have to undergo a change to their polling place. It's a disruption for our election judges, it's a disruption for our office, but most importantly, it's a disruption for the voters who have to go vote. So we will do some, some concerted efforts to educate the voters that are going to be subject to polling place changes. Normally, our normal procedure is when we make a polling place change, we send a letter to every registered voter in the precinct that's affected by the polling place change to let them know that the change is happening. We will do that. We will, of course, issue them their new voter ID card that will have the new polling place on it. We will also explore the use of our Help America Vote Act grant funds for any voter education activities that we can target to those areas where there has been a disruption in their polling place. We are also asking you to make these changes, both for the primary election in March and the general election in November, though we don't think we need the extra capacity to, to, to handle voter turnout in March. We're doing that because we want voters to have an extra election to get used to where their polling place will be for those, for that percentage of voters for which there's a disruption.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz.
Thanks, Gordy. Are all polling places now in agreement? Do you have all of them solid agreements for each, each polling place?
Yes, polling places is a, is an incredible amount of work to visit the facility, tour it, secure their permission, explain everything that we need to do, examine the facility for, for ADA compliance, prepare them for what they're going to deal with on election day, coordinate the securing of a key, distribution of equipment. We've spent the last six or eight weeks working on that piece of the project, and it felt like every time we got the last piece of the puzzle into place, something else would fall apart. Right now, we're set. Our past procedure has been that if something should happen now, where a polling place may withdraw between the time the County Board approves a polling place and the actual conducting of the election, there's a statute where you know where I have authority to make that change on my own, but our procedure is that we notify the Chairman of the County Board, and if there's any objection, he, of course, can bring it back to the full board.
Mr. Wissenberry? Gordy, could you tell us, you said you're going to send a letter to voters whose polling place has changed. Is that before the primary and before the general election, or just before the primary?
Just before the primary.
And when you, when you send out that letter, I know the card is sent out, it's, it's just a card.
It's just a card.
It's a postcard. But when you send out that letter, would you be able to include information about early voting in that communication so that those disrupted folks would also know that they can go to, open to vote beforehand?
Yes, we'll promote early voting, we'll promote absentee voting, because of course you can vote by mail now with no excuse. We'll do everything, every, every change we have made in the office over the last year has been in anticipation of what our turnout is going to look like for November of 2012. And as much as we can push people to early voting or absentee voting as possible, we will do so. It reduces lines here, it reduces lines at the polling place. It's just better for everyone involved.
I guess I'd like to suggest that you consider repeating the communication to the disrupted voters before the general election, because it's a long time from your election to November, and not everybody votes in the primary.
If, if we can do so within the constraints of our budget, without having to come back to you with our head in hand, we will, we will try and do that.
Mr. Schrober?
Thank you. Gordy, I see that, that you moved to move attend to the municipal building. For clerk, or to Level 2, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Granting to Level 7 extra precincts.
Precinct Number 2. And just for a record, you're displaying 2,500 voters that used to go to the community center. I, I'm hoping that, that will be more accessible to Precinct 2 for Toledo, and also, one more question, easy one. Will there be signs identifying, large enough signs identifying outside of the precinct that, that are changing that will help direct people if they do happen to show up? For Toledo Precinct 2, at the municipal, or at the Civic Center, they'll be directed to the municipal center?
Yes, and we'll, we'll have signage, we'll educate the judges at the old polling place. The Toledo 2 Champagne 4/7 split is a great example of what we're trying to do with the decoupling of consolidated polling places. It used to be Champagne 7, which is essentially the south side of Savoy. It's now been renumbered Champagne 4, but it's exactly the same precinct. Champagne 4 and Toledo 2 were a consolidated polling place at the Savoy Recreation Center. Savoy Recreation Center is a great polling place, but their parking has limited capacity, and the room in which we conduct voting has limited capacity. If we left those two precincts together, we would anticipate more than 2,000 voters traveling through the doors of that single polling place in November 2012. And in my opinion, that is just too much for that one facility to handle. We could have moved either one of those precincts to the Savoy Municipal Building, but the Savoy Municipal Building is actually smaller than the Recreation Center, so we moved the smaller of the two precincts, which is Toledo 2. The polling place for Toledo 2 would have been out of the Toledo 2 precinct boundaries regardless.
Any other questions for Mr. Gordy? Mr. Wyble?
I just have a comment. Al Klein, who's Chair of the Central Committee for the Dentress of Champagne County, has examined the polling places and does nothing to report back as far as the municipal.
That's great.
Thank you.
Can I put that on the airpiece?
No other discussion on this item. At this point, I'll just call the question on the request to support the voting. Thank you, Ms. Gordy. All in favor of this change to the polling places?
Aye.
In the opposition? Thank you, that motion carries. Other business, V1, Request Approval Resolution Honoring Retired Zoning Board of Appeals Member Melvin Schrober. Moved by Ms. Covert, second. Let's see. I'll give that to Ms.
I'll give that to Ms. Jay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? The motion carries. D2, request approval resolution authorizing the submission. Mr. White was coming on the public question to adopt an opt-out program for the supply of electricity to residential and small commercial retail customers. Mr. White.
Thank you. Let me give a little background on this item. I first found out about it, I think, on October 6th, and from email from one of the potential providers of electricity to the county. And at that time, I thought my shows, I don't know what this is, so I asked for meeting with Andrew Levy, who I very good know more about it. I can't recall when we had to meet. I know we had some problems getting to meet together. I think we actually did meet a couple weeks later, and he told me what he knew. He's not a specialist in that, certainly I'm not either at this moment. And then, I talked to Ms. Bruce about this a week or two later, but then we found out that Champaign-Urbana and Savoy had been working on this for some time, or at least they had started working on it right away, and they were moving forward and planning to have a referendum in the spring. And then, obviously, I felt we needed to get on board. So our plan is, if we could get on the same referendum, we could go, piggyback along with them, basically go through the same motions they do with minimal effort. If we decide to do this at a later date, obviously, we're on our own. That's going to take more time, more effort, and things like that. So what I want to do quick is I'm going to quickly go through this PowerPoint presentation that you have printed out at your desk. Let me say that I ripped this off, the City of Champaign, thank you, City of Champaign, that's why there's no front cover. Any place within this where it says "City," replace that with "County." And first of all, let's talk about State of Illinois. State of Illinois is a deregulated energy state. What does that mean? That means that on your electricity bill, you have a supplier who makes the energy, like the people who own the Clinton Power Plant. They provide the energy, they sell, oh, sorry, the results of the transmission, people who get a fee for getting electricity to your house or to your business. And, sorry, that's for the fee to get to the local utility. And then there's distribution, which gets it to your business or home. So three people, suppliers, transmission, and distribution. After deregulation, customers can now choose their own electrical supplier. Many of you probably have gotten letters in the mail from companies like Blue Star, and I think there's Illini, Illini Electric, or something like that. You get letters of solicitation. They want you to designate them as your supplier. That's what they're trying to do. Okay. Now, Illinois laws allows customers to purchase supplies from two sources. One, from default utility company. Or you can buy it from, again, a retail electric business called RES, it's like Blue Star, like I just mentioned. You can buy them as you like. However, well, next page. Why are we going to buy from an RES? Because of the competition, they can offer you a lower rate, that being instead of just having one supplier, you can sort of compete between two. Who's going to give me my best offer? So like, you can auction yourself. Who buys some of these RESs? Well, companies that use lots of powers, like the City of Champaign. The county, our utilities, we belong to a co-op who does the same thing. I don't know where we buy our power from right now, but we do the same thing. So who does it? Well, individual residents rarely do, until with the passing of this bill. But this law does, allows the city, or counties, or villages to combine residents into a buying group. Basically, it's form a cooperative-like group. The whole idea is, the more people you have involved, the more dependent prices you can get, i.e. you can get cheaper prices. This is electricity only, also this is only for Ameren customers. So it's Ameren, Silco, Ameren, Illinois. I know different people write checks out in different parts of the country, but it's all Ameren customers only. And don't ask me why it's only for Ameren? I don't know. So what are the benefits? Well, the benefits are savings on electrical bills. Primarily, in the first year, the estimates are that you can save up to 20% to 30% of the current power bill. The next few years after that, it gets down to less than like 10% to 15%, maybe 20%. And again, I can't explain that, but a number of people told me that that's the way it is. So the sooner we get into action with this, more money that people will save. If we delay, the cost of the money. It's relatively low risk. There is a single electrical bill, you won't notice it, except in the fine print on your power bill, that the power comes from somewhere else. And there's no action required by residents until after we get the referendum, get the vote on, vote for referendum, get this going. If the referendum passes, individuals can opt out at any time. However, once they opt out, they can't get back in. That's their choice. But they can opt out, they can vote for their own supplier on a non-basis, or they go back to Ameren as their supplier. Again, this is authorities, the Oregon Power ABC Act. How it works, the city or the county will aggregate the electrical loads of individual residents and businesses, trying to negotiate for the cheapest power rate. Also, it works typically by competition, again, Ameren, Blue Star, Direct Energy, Good Energy, et cetera, et cetera. Now, the benefits of aggregation, according to Champaign, they think that, say, Champaign saved about $4 million to the residents for the whole city. I don't know what it is for a county, because I just don't have the numbers on me. On an individual basis, they gain $10 a month off each bill, at least initially, if that's going to, they'll drop some. Next page, again, low risk. The county can reject all business if unfavorable. We still can get power through Ameren. Again, residents, and this also affects small businesses. They also can opt out of the program if they want to pursue electricity on their own. What they will be, a group of people who will be appointed by the county board to do things like select the supplier, that is if the referendum passes, they also monitor it too. So that would be the board's goal. Cost and risk. We cannot obviously guarantee that there will be a decrease in energy costs, but however, certainly it might be the energy increase. To get possible, individuals can get a better rate than the city. There are some consultant fees. Champaign-Urbana plan to, there is a, you can collect actually a small fee to compensate for that. Champaign-Urbana-Savoy plan to collect a small fee, just to compensate them for the time. They're not interested in making money. They realize this is really a short-term phenomenon, it's not worth trying to make money off something like that. Most of the time, you're going to spend on staff time. One of the biggest things we have to do is have an education program to try to teach, get some educational literature out to the people who are before the vote on this referendum. The referendum, the referendum is required by the law. The aim is to have it on the bill on March 20th, 2012. And the ballot question reads, "Shall the City of Champaign have the authority to arrange for the supply of electricity for its residential and small commercial retail customers who have not opted out of such a program?" And right now, Urbana-Savoy, again, Urbana-Savoy and Champaign are pursuing aggregation now. They said, actually, that county is pursuing it. Well, they're kind of ahead of the game there, but. Again, it allows us to work together, but what I think we could do, if we worked alongside them, I guess, again, we won't have an intergovernable agreement per se, but if we worked alongside with them to achieve the same thing. It's possible that our council committee might select a different supplier than they do, but that's all right. If it comes down to that, definitely have that right to do that. And so, let's end my presentation. Ms. Adams?
Do you understand the motion? We need a motion on the floor before we have the discussion.
Second.
I'm sorry. Who's the first? Ms. Petrie, second by Mr. Richards. I saw Mr. Carter wrote down first, I got Mr. Kurtz, and then, no.
I was just thinking, I have a pretty motion.
Thank you. Mr. Carter.
Yeah. I'm sitting here listening. The first phrase, because I was just trying to ask you, where did you get this from?
City of Champaign. City of Champaign.
Now, you tell me what we just got out of the legislature assembly today. Now, your legislators in Frankfield, your lawmakers, they didn't, look, it's nothing we can do but pave what Ameren and these companies ask us to do, because they didn't, they didn't put that already in law. So why are we sitting up here wasting time trying to do, this is nothing but win the dress? What our legislators did last month, or was that last month or month, it's dead. We should have had this before then, not now. And it's nothing we can do. Your elderly people are going to suffer because Ameren, I mean, Ameren have the power and the rest of them to do what they want to do. And I have every one of them taking that little campaign money from Ameren and the rest of them to get this done. So why are we sitting here letting these people smoke us with this kind of crap?
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
We don't have a prayer in the world. I'm going to tell you now, you said you'd do it, but you don't, because it's already been done.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Mr. Kurtz, and then I see the motion.
I have to abstain from this vote. I'm in this business right now, and it would be conflicting interest.
I'm glad Mr. Carter brought up those points, because while there's nothing we can do to undo the so-called smart grid bill that the legislature passed that has to do with transmission and distribution, I think that this is a great opportunity for the people in Champaign County. We've already had great success with the buying group for ourselves. And part of the deregulation, and one of the bones when this was set up a little over 10 years ago, that's actually pro-consumer, is the opportunity to do something where we do come together, and on the supply side, we do have a chance to bid this out, and probably will do so more successfully than individuals looking to do this. Thank you.
Mr. James.
I have two questions. First one is, I guess we're being, the state's saying we have to put it on the ballot sooner or later, correct?
We do not have to. But if we want to give the opportunity to obviously residents to form an aggregation, we have, the only way to form an aggregation is have it on the ballot. Otherwise, anybody could try to form a co-op independently.
Okay. Well, that answers that question. My second question is, your voice is so soothing, I guess I missed it. If I was like, if I was like where I live, out there in rural area, and the county passes this, does that mean for a simple guy like me that I can join in with the county and possibly get my bill awarded, or do I have to stay out there with who I am?
Are you an Ameren customer?
Am I?
Yes.
They seem to think so, yes.
Well, no, actually, the county is a different, it's a different category. You'd be joining all the other rural residents, like Mr. Nudo lives in a part of Champaign that's unincorporated. You'd be with him and other people like that throughout the county, outside municipalities, and that would be your group. And then, you as a whole would obviously bargain for a supplier.
Oh, we would have to do that?
Well, you'd have, there would be a committee appointed by the county board that would do that.
That answers that question.
I have Mr. Max, and Mr. Alex, and then Mr. Kurtz.
May I ask the county clerk a couple questions?
The county clerk?
Yes. Mechanics of actually putting this on the ballot, when does it have to be passed by the board? And is it something you can accomplish by the March 20 primary? And any idea how much additional cost it will entail?
The deadline to place a public question on the ballot by ordinance or resolution is January 3rd for the March 20th primary. So we have plenty of time for that. We won't start creating ballots for the March primary until middle of January after we get our certifications from the state board election, so we have plenty of time to deal with this. One of the things that nobody ever considers when talking about a question like this is what is the actual cost of administering the ballot question? And because the City of Champaign and City of Urbana are already moving towards putting this on the ballot in March instead of waiting until November, a lot of those costs are going to be sunk for us anyway. If a jurisdiction in Champaign County tells us to put something on the ballot, we have to put it on the ballot as long as they follow all the laws. But because the question is going to be on the ballot at the primary, we're going to have to craft, for example, if you pass it countywide and ask for the countywide question, for every precinct ballot code that we have in the county, and right now with the Republican Party primary and Democratic Party primary countywide, we'll already have somewhere in the neighborhood of 600 different ballots for Champaign County. Different districts intersect, so we'll have about 600 different ballots. We will also have to have an additional third ballot style at every precinct and every polling place in the county for a nonpartisan ballot in case somebody wants to show up to vote on this ballot question but doesn't want to pull a party ballot. But because the City of Champaign and City of Urbana are already moving forward with this, we already have to have this question on the ballot in 64 of the 118 precincts in Champaign County anyway. So a lot of those costs, we're already preparing to deal with. But this train had pretty much left the station before anybody said, hey, I wonder how much this is going to cost to administer. It'll be somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,000.
My men with Mr. Holton early on, and we thought we'd just discuss several mechanics of this.
Mr. Adams.
A couple of things. My reading of this statute, which is even more vague and half-assed than the typical Illinois statute, indicates that it's the county's responsibility, or the municipality, or in our case, the county's responsibility to provide notifications to the affected potential customers, that they have the right to opt out, to organize the bidding, to provide these services, and to essentially administer this program. Who's going to do that, and do we have the resources to even do that?
I can't really answer the question. One possibility is that it could be included along with the billing from Ameren. Again, that's a good question.
But I mean, are you going to sit there and listen to 10 power companies come in and offer better deals?
Actually, the plan is to hire a consultant who will do that for you. And actually, on this Thursday, Champaign-Urbana-Savoy are planning to do that, or including three representative, three different organizations. My plan is the city with them.
Okay, so by the time this goes to the full board, we should have a better idea of how the cities are going to handle this.
I believe so, yes.
Okay. I understand this doesn't, again, based on my reading of this, it looks like it excludes electric co-ops.
Correct.
I don't know, do we have any idea what percentage of rural or unincorporated Champaign County is served by Ameren?
I actually call Ameren and try to get, try to get, talk to someone, there's probably an answer, I don't know if I can.
I mean, does any, would any of the rural representatives on the board have any idea of that? Are most of, is most of the rural county under Eastern Illini, or is most of it under Ameren? Most under?
In our area where I live, which is actually, I'm in an unincorporated area, just like the sign that's incorporated is in my yard, is Eastern Illini, when you go a little bit further north of 136.
Okay. Are there any other electrical suppliers up in Champaign County that we know of other than Eastern Illini?
Villas-Rancho has its own.
Okay, and that was the next question.
And that is a huge.
But in our area, it's Ameren.
I have Eastern Illini.
Okay. Does anybody know of anything that's not either Eastern Illini or Ameren?
I believe Eastern and Ameren are the ones, as far as.
Microphone?
No, sorry. As far as distribution, I don't know. I do know where I live, I'm Ameren, mom and dad, just across a section, I mean, as the crow flies a mile away, maybe they're Eastern. It just varies. I mean, I know a situation where, you know, I think Sadoris is, there may be, yeah, they're Ameren now, but.
Silco, Ameren, Silco, yeah.
Just outside, there's an Eastern. I mean, it just varies.
Okay, the reason I ask is I just want to make sure that this is something that isn't just going to apply to, you know, 1,000 people out in the county. This is actually going to be worth doing, and something it would be. And then my final question, which I think is to confirm, Dan, you said Rancho still does operate their own power?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to point out that just around Champaign-Urbana and Savoy, there's approximately 6,140 households which are on Ameren. That's just households.
Outside of this?
Outside, that's just around the Champaign-Urbana-Savoy area.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you.
I have Ms. Petrie, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Magnus.
Thank you. I, I cannot support this referendum point on the ballot and the reasons are the following. Other way the statute is set up, you have to opt out and once you opt out, you can't opt back in. That limits choices. Second, it's structured on price, it isn't structured any way to encourage people to conserve energy. And third, this is not the least, this is not the best way to save money on your electrical rates. There's been a program put out by Ameren called Power Smart Pricing for five years and the savings on that is far greater than any projected saving on this or any of the mailings you've been getting. So this is not serving our citizens of the county well to put this on the referendum. They should take other options if they really want to save money on your electrical rates.
Ms. Anderson.
Well, we had an email, and I'm trying to think if that came from the city, but it had this information.
This for me?
But it had a lot of other information explaining the opt-in or opt-out. Mr. Alex was asking about how certain information itself, and I'm not sure what all of was, but there were things that Ameren would still have to put in their, their billing. So I think some, you know, other than, than this, that there would be information that would go out through your billing if you are under Ameren.
Ms. Magnus.
Um, I was just, Mr. Alex kinda asked what I was going to tell. Thank you.
Mr. Carter.
You're making sure tonight, can anybody, I'm honest enough to ask you, I know what they told, but can anybody here tell us what was in the agreement that our lawmaker made the other month with the power company? Do you know what was in there? Anybody? So this is what I'm saying. And I was told, and I know they didn't lie to me, we don't have a right to regulate the power company. That's it. When all our lawmakers taking up donations and agree to those that, for the budget they did, we, we suck. Now, you can sit here and take all of this crap there you want to, but to me, I'm gonna tell you, I have a feeling we've been had already.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. I will have to abstain as well. I'm signed up with a company just recently that I haven't started exactly, but there may be a project. Mr. Richards.
Just wanted to say I was remiss in earlier telling the board, we're not pioneers in this in Illinois. Several municipalities have already done this. And I know Park at least considers they're getting involved with this to be a success. So we're not, we're not pulling out of the public interest.
Carol, you're staying for one.
I signed up with an energy company recently that hasn't actually opened in the market, but they've done training for this and so there may be a project interest.
Would it, would it cause me to abstain if my kid's rappelling bikes on the?
And using it for energy, I would think so.
If I, I'm, is, you signed a company to get the energy from, correct?
SPC.
No, to be, similar, similar.
So you, you'll be working for them?
Correct.
Okay.
Same with me. Origin Energy is the name of the company.
That's right. Any other questions about the referendum ballot? Okay, thank you. I don't know how to call a question. All right, all in favor of the request for this resolution on the public question on the ballot? Signify by saying aye. Opposition? Aye. I think the ayes have it. That motion passes. Um, this motion of ayes to be placed on consent. We have item A2, A3, A5, A6, A7, V2, C3, D1. And that, is it? Oh, and from the addendum, I'm sorry, A8. That'll be all from policy. Thank you.
After we have Justice Social Services and Mr. Richards.
Okay. First thing that we have are the monthly reports.
Can I make an omnibus motion to accept to place all those reports on file without discussion?
Second. Thank you.
Uh, I, I don't know about without discussion, but we can do an omnibus motion. We have a second from, was that Jones? Okay. We do have an omnibus motion. Is there any discussion? I do, as usual, have a couple of points, but is there any, does anybody else have any discussion points? The, I, I wanted to bring up the public defender, they're a little, they're, this is not their normal report. As you can see, we've had, we had problems with the public defender and they have now cut up. And thank you to Randy Rosenbaum on that. Just wanted to skim a little bit of his correspondence with me over what their problem had been. Mr. Rosenbaum points out that since their new county computer system went operational several years ago, it's certainly taken an extra month to get the reports to the board because there's been programming and data entry problems. And because he's had to lay off a legal secretary last year, his administrative assistant has found less time to work on the statistics. But never fear, the computer system's been upgraded recently in Kirk Bedwell and Randy were, were testing the system. And so this is why we are now cut up. No more glitches in the computer system. Hopefully, we will stay caught up with the public defender's office. We also, I hope everybody took the time to pull down the third quarter report for due well supervision or probation in the court services. Does anybody have any questions, discussion on, on these reports? I, Ms. Petrie.
Well, I sent to this information question, it isn't directly to these reports, but when I go into read them, there are other entities that are up on the website and their reports are very behind. Circuit clerk and the coroner. These are basically them.
Circuit clerk and the coroner are elected officials and you could contact them if you have a concern about whether or not the reports are posted.
Basically, these are executive agencies, I would guess you call it, but these agencies do report to us. The de-elected, it's good to know what they're doing, but we really can't compel anything out of any. Any, are there any other questions, discussions on, Mr. James, omnibus motion? All in favor of putting these reports on file, say aye. Opposed? Okay. If that went on consent, then we're not going to consent. Okay. Our second thing, B1, we do, we have application probation in court services for approval of application of award acceptance of grant from the only criminal justice authority. This is not a first-time grant. It is not completely revenue neutral. There is, there is a match on that that would come through the probation services fund if, as expected, they get this. Again, I'm gonna take a motion from this Ammons, second from Anderson. Is there any, any discussion, are there any questions on this item? Okay, no discussion. All, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, same. Motion passes, passed unanimously, so we will go on consent. We'll not make the full board meeting longer, like some, some of the things we'll be discussing. So, is there other business? Does anyone have other business?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the chair if he would assist. I have requested a, sorry, program evaluation of the access initiative, of which we have not received any update here from Justice, and I would hope that you could assist me in getting that.
I hope that would be a great, I don't know.
Yeah, one of the, the great person to ask is getting this.
First up, we can make Mr. Rosales give us some very detailed, long reports on that. And while, and it's, it's definitely time come January to hear from several of the people running these programs again, so we can keep up our momentum on that. Is there any, any other, other business from any members of the board? Okay, Mr. Carter. What's that, Mr. Carter? I'll get, I'll get Mr. Nill.
Is this other business?
Or under other business? Do you have any other Justice and Social Services?
Well, since we get kind of carried away here on these, what we can say and what we can't say, this is a good time for me to find out. Now, what can you say on the other business?
I, if it's related to.
We got a problem with that?
Justice and Social Services Committee, Committee of the whole, I, by the way, if it's related to Justice and Social Services, you can say it.
Well, I just sit up here and see some of the stuff we do, wasting all this time, and we not eating, we not eating the agencies that's supposed to be doing it. This bothers me. And if I go on to explain myself, because I really want to vote on that, that was an important question about the poison of the water, then I would support him. But I need to know, hey, you got a constituted body that's already put in place to send people to jail if they break the law and hell be up here pissing. Now, come on, you all, this don't make no sense. It don't make no sense. Now, I'm trying to get a clarification of that. Because there's no way that you go with this agency when there's been bodies sound and sworn in to do this job. Somebody else gonna hear you? No. They gonna tell you, go back to that agency. So you just spending your four years here amount of time for nothing. And it needs to be stopped.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. York, you still have any other?
I have under other.
Under other. Is that, is that a yes? No, no one, no one. Is there any other Justice and Social Services other business? Okay, B1 will be on consent. That is it. Services, you're welcome.
Okay, a couple of items yet on other business. There was one item which we had hoped it would be on the agenda. That was an RFP on the sound deployment for the video arrangement. However, what happened was that this user had a, had a root C on Friday, a Thursday and Friday, and we did not get that on the addendum. So, what was the date we, we tend to?
The RFP for courts and video, courts, sound and video arrangement, which you're all familiar with, should have been on policy tonight for Google to be released. It did not make the agenda. It's all scheduled to be advertised, released, placed on the website starting tomorrow. What we would like to do is go ahead and proceed, bring it to the committee, to, to the county board meeting next Tuesday. If you, when you can vote on it because it's on the agenda, do not approve it and it would be like a committee action at the board meeting, then we would pull it and we would not proceed with it. But we would prefer not to lose the time by issuing it at this point in time. We're scheduled to be able to bring a proposed contract to you in January and we would not be able to do that if we wait until next week to release it.
Mr. Alex.
That was under the, apparently mistaken impression that I'd be involved in the process of helping put that RFP together and I was never given any notice that that was being done. I thought Mr. Chris was under similar impression.
Well, the RFP, I mean, you, it was done by our facilities director, it was done with the other individuals from the court system and a consultant who provided assistance. Certainly, at this point, you, we can get it to you right away, you can review it if you have comments, we could change it.
That'd be great, since I thought I was gonna be at the table when we wrote the thing in the first place.
I apologize, I didn't know that you weren't contacted.
So if you could email that to him tonight, he can spend the rest of the night looking at that.
That'd be great.
Okay, um, again, so we'll have, this'll be on the agenda for the county board meeting, but it'll be actually as a committee item there. And so it'll be someone, just make a note of that once on that agenda, just so that you know about that. Okay, does any, anybody have a problem with that?
Am I on that committee?
Oh, no.
Yeah, we hope not.
Okay, Mr. Nudo, you have, you want to say something?
Yes, thank you. Here on the basis of my overall support of the Clinton-Lanville intergovernmental agreement and the conversation I had with the finance chair and the chair, that we are going to discuss this further, I am asking the recording secretary to make my vote a yes and then we'll have further discussion during the regular meeting. So please note that.
I just want to ask Mr. Betts from a particular viewpoint, what's the proper way of changing vote or?
Agree a motion to reconsider the main motion.
I guess I have the motion to reconsider. However, I will point out, Mr. Nudo, you have on the record, you want to vote yes. So although your vote being recorded no, certainly it's on record, certainly you can support it.
I want, I want to make a yes.
Oh, then we have to have a motion to reconsider. Somebody here wants to do that, that voted yes?
Anybody who voted no can make that motion.
No, after they've voted yes in this case, has to be prevailed inside. So anybody here who voted yes, wants to reconsider, Mr. Jay? A second, Mr. Rosales, okay? That motion's on the floor again. Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
No.
Any discussion on the item? Roll call, please.
Betts?
Is this a motion, a motion to reconsider or?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we, the motion, the, I don't want, I'm just a motion to reconsider to bring back the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, back to the side, the main motion's now on the floor on whether to vote for the Clinton-Lanville item.
Voting it again?
Yeah.
Just to give the item a yes.
Ms. Anderson.
I have a question. If we vote for this, is that, would we then be voting just to change his vote?
No, no, the, the motion to reconsider eliminates all votes.
Then every, anybody else could change?
They could, that's right, you can change too, correct. Ms. Holden.
Alan, thank you for bringing that up. I do, voting no for that was a difficult decision. I do want to support the Mohammed Afar's integrity, so I want to ensure that the people that have had an opportunity to reconsider do have an opportunity to change their vote from a no vote to a yes vote.
Take it down, please, let her speak.
Thank you. So I, I think in fairness, I do appreciate the opportunity to have a reconsideration prior to this meeting ending tonight.
Further discussion, Mr. James.
I'm gonna have to avoid Carter's seat here. Here we vote. Now, we're gonna go back and revisit it because somebody felt like their vote wasn't right. Vote when you have the knowledge and vote the way you should.
Call a question?
I recognize Ms. McGinty as our second caller question. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, call a question. Roll call, please. Member, I abstain.
Betts?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Coer?
Yes.
Esri?
No.
Holderfield?
Yes.
James?
No.
Jay?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kurtz?
For the second time, yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Michaels?
No.
Nudo?
Yes.
O'Connor?
Yes.
Petrie?
No.
Wilsonberry?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Rosales?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Ammons?
No.
Anderson?
No.
McGinty?
Yes.
Wilsonberry?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Rosales?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Ammons?
No.
No.
McGinty?
Motion carries. Any other business? Same number.